Test one two, test one two.
Regular council meeting for July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one to order. At this time, we'll take a moment of silence, a moment of personal silence and reflection. City of Lloydminster and the Council of Lloydminster would like to acknowledge that the chambers in which we are holding today's meeting is situated on Treaty Six territory, the traditional lands of First Nations and Métis people. Reminder, all members of council are obligated to declare a conflict of interest or a pecuniary interest as per section one thirty-three of the Lloydminster Charter regarding any item on this agenda. Counselor Whitey.
Sorry, just having little troubles here with my internet, but I will declare for the item number. Eight point two point one.
All right.
And although talking with Doug Rodwell that it is, I am able to stay in the chambers for that one due to the charter, I will remove myself just per perception purposes.
Thank you, Counselor Whitey. Not seeing any others, we'll move on. At this time, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Not seeing any. I'll move on to item three. I'll look for direction from council and the approval of the agenda that's presented. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. I move that the agenda dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one be approved.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Torrison, thank you very much. Any further discussion on that agenda, on that motion presented? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Feels kind of rusty, I'm sorry, I missed a meeting and I'm just out of groove here. Moving on to item number four, the approval of the previous meeting minutes. I'll look for direction, Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. I move that the regular council minutes dated June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one be approved.
Thank you. Seconder, I've got Counselor Fagin, thank you very much. Any further discussion on those minutes? Not seeing any? I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to item number five, is there any business arising from those minutes that council needs to deal with at this time? Not seeing any noted. Move on to item number six, public presentations, I don't see any noted.
We have a two o'clock.
Two o'clock, a public hearing, okay. Moving on to item number seven, the public hearing, which is scheduled for two o'clock, so we'll return to item number seven at that time. Moving on to item number eight, city manager.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. For item eight point one point one, Downtown Redevelopment Committee, terms of reference, I'll ask Catlin Duescher from Economic Development to come forward and present.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Good afternoon, Catlin.
Today I bring forward the recommendation that council approve the terms of reference as presented and direct administration to proceed with establishing the committee through an application process for the Downtown Area Redevelopment Committee. The terms of reference for the Downtown Area Redevelopment Committee were presented to council on June fourteenth. After questions and comments from council, the seats, the seats have been revised to include additional seats for business representation and one less seat for social services. Thus, the total number of committee members remains the same. The Downtown Area Redevelopment Plan is the statutory, statutory plan in accordance with section six three four of the MGA with the purpose to serve as the framework for the redevelopment of downtown Lloydminster. From construction of roads and infrastructure to public spaces and events, the DARP outlines an action plan intended to revive the downtown and make it show, a showpiece for Lloydminster. Lloydminster's downtown needs, infrastructure upgrades, and as such, the Downtown Area Redevelopment Plan was created to include an outline of all areas of redevelopment plan. The plan touches on the public realm, land use, design guidelines, and the implementation plan. During the twenty twenty-one budget process, council approved the addition of the Business Retention Specialist to the City of Lloydminster's Economic Development and Land Division team. In the DARP, one of the implementation items is to hire a downtown coordinator. While this Business Retention Specialist is not solely committed to the downtown, this position has a heavy focus on the downtown and the implementation of the DARP. However, it is important to have the community support, thus the proposal of the downtown committee. The committee's purpose is to bring together a cross-section of community interest groups, business stakeholders, and individuals to work together with the City of Lloydminster to coordinate and implement the DARP. The committee objectives are proposed as follows. One, review and determine the course to complete the DARP implementation plan. Two, work as a community to improve the downtown experiences in the City of Lloydminster. Three, reassess the progress in three years as a committee is outlined in the DARP and report progress to council to determine the need of continuation. Four, report to the City of Lloydminster's executive leadership team and subsequently council semi, semiannually about the progress and support requirements for completing the implementation plan. Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Catlin. I'll let the council for questions, comments, counsel touch.
Yeah, thanks very much, Worship. Thanks, Catlin. I read through this and I really, I think this is great. I was just trying to think on a very day-to-day operational basis what the work of that committee would look like. And so part of it for me, is it going to function like a regular committee, Robert's Rules of Orders with recommendations to the city? You know, how, how fluid will it be and what will an output sort of be expected from this committee at some point in time? Because I think part, where I sort of ran into questions for myself is that, so here's the DARP and here's the city and here's the committee, there, there are going to be implementations for the city in terms of cost around some of the pieces that are embedded in there. So if our course or path we see financially is A and they say, no, 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 you need to change it to make it A five as opposed to A one, sort of how do we, how do we work with each other through that process? Or, or is, I'm just trying to figure out what that looks like because we're going to need to mix it up a little bit in there and I'm not sure what that mixing up is going to look like, so.
I think with the committee, so a budget will be developed for, for the implementation and I think if that, if that changes course, then that would be when it would become forward, I believe, Dion. Yeah, so we would develop a budget for the implementation and if that was changed or the committee went off course or said, you know, this is, this is incorrect, we need to make adjustments to that approved budget, then that, then that would be when we would discuss budget.
I guess it would just be one of those things, I think, that upfront we should say that we're, it's going to be work in progress as well because, I mean, one of the biggest pieces upfront in that document says to coordinate implementation and execution of the DARP. So, you know, how much latitude will they have around that document, the DARP itself? We don't expect them to reinvent it.
No.
We would expect that there would be an opportunity to massage it, to play with it and do stuff with it, but I guess I wouldn't want to create expectations of the committee that they can just change it, you know, dramatically and, and really they're, they're in control of the purse string. So it, it needs to have some parameters around it and that's the only thing, I guess, that I was trying to wrap my head around that piece of it. I'm not asking to be on the committee.
Okay.
But, but I'm just saying that I think, you know, some of those discussions in there really need to, if you have people that are really enthusiastic and excited about wanting to do things, and I know there will be, it has to be tempered a bit with the fact that, you know, there is a DARP, here is a plan and part of it is, you know, communication, input, working with each other and those sort of things as opposed to rewriting the DARP and it's just kind of trying to strike the balance.
Yeah, part of the, in the terms of reference, it talks about not having financial authority, decision-making. It talks about providing advice and endorsement only and will speak on, no committee member will speak on behalf of the city or so. Basically, it's a recommending board to council for major decisions. I mean, if it's a minor decisions or recommendations, that might be one thing, but if we're talking, you know, what type of lampposts are we going to have or, you know, what the design's going to look like or the sidewalks and different things like that, I would think they're going to be a recommending board or committee to, to city council and administration.
So, and I guess along those lines, and I, and I appreciate that, is that, so then their role is to come up with new recommendations as well and that would enhance or sort of fit within the DARP. That's what I mean.
Yep.
And part of that, just to add further to that, part of that is there, there is city administration on, on the committee as well as, as a member of, of council, so.
Counselor Mayor.
Thank you, worshiping Catlin, thank you for that presentation. I really like the subcommittee approach that you've identified in here because it gives us a broader perspective from community and maybe to engage some better expertise into the work as well. The orientation is great so that committee members will receive that orientation and I think that will be really important to set the stage for what Counselor Dychuk is saying is that here's what the responsibilities are. The question I had was around the chair and vice chair selection and this might be just a transparency approach, but often when I'm working with boards, the, the chair and vice chair are selected from the applicants or they have an opportunity to say that's a position that they would be interested in and here we have it set up so they're selected at the committee, the first committee meeting and I, I'm just, you know, curious about the, that approach because is it the best approach to take? Will we get the right chair and vice chair in those positions? And then the other question would be, do you have a job description for those specific positions as well?
That's fair. We don't have the job description written up, but we can, we can change that and to make sure that's, that's available. And if we do want to consider looking at, including that in the application as those positions and that's something we can change.
I, I think, you know, you want to make sure you get the right person into those positions, someone who has the ability to, to move the work forward and a strong understanding of committee work. So I, I think just, you know, some, some curiosity around, you know, what that could look like or should look like from a city perspective. The other question I had was the term of the chair and vice chair and, and I think that should be noted in the terms of reference, how long they'll sit in that position.
Okay, thank you.
And, and maybe not if noted in the terms of reference, perhaps it's, you know, on the application process or, or some other documentation that identifies that, but probably most appropriately in the terms of reference. The other question I had, sorry, is that okay?
No, go ahead.
So on the financial requests approved by council, is that for every request or, or does the city manager have, like, do we approve a budget and the city manager kind of manages that? Not everything will come to us?
Yeah, that'd be managed through the, through our department, I guess, and depending on the, I think there'll be some feeling out process in terms of what magnitude of decisions will stay at the committee and what, what type of decisions will come back to council. I think when we get into it, if we're looking at the overall, say we're doing the overall design of the downtown, whether it's the streets, sidewalks, light poles, all that would come back to council for approval. If we're talking about minor things of changing, you know, a sign to look like this versus this, maybe that's a different, different story and there's a little more latitude there from the committee, but certainly it'll hinge on the magnitude of the decisions and once we get into the, the, the meeting, well, I think we'll get, or the meetings of the committee will get a better idea what that, some of those parameters might look like in terms of dollar value, whether it's importance of decision, whether that might look like, so.
Thank you.
Question, Counsel Dychuk alluded to, and I think it is a good question. Robert's Rules of Order, do they apply to, we apply it to the city, I believe, each and every day, so would that be the, the terms that would likely be used by the committee if they were to look for it?
We included that in the first round and then took it out because it would be implied, but yes, that, that is, if we can put it back in, if that's.
I think it's just, just for clarifying factor and that answers that question and I think we use it standardly, but in this way it's, it's in writing and people understand because there are other versions to, to organize and set forward for a meeting and so forth.
Yeah, that can be put back in.
Counselor Torrison.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I, I don't really have much in terms of questions, I just, you know, I think it's, it's just good generally that we've got a, a document that really sets out our intentions that we actually intend to do something with our fancy downtown plan and that we intend to actually do some work downtown to attract people there, to have events, to, you know, promote local business, all those things that I think are really important for the downtown and for our local economy and for tourism. All of it is really important work and the fact that we're just getting the committee together, getting the champions who already exist in our community and giving them some, you know, some parameters of where we would hope they could work with us and get them working on, you know, implementing it because there's, there are people in our community who want to put their hand up, who want to do these things and really we're, we're letting the leash go a little bit and saying, yeah, go for it, you know? Let's, let's help make this community a better place to live, let's improve quality of life and it's, let's attract people to come here. So at the end of the day, I'm just excited to, to see it happen and I know that there's some low-hanging fruit that we can start picking away at in terms of events, in terms of, you know, whether they want to organize sidewalk sales, things like that. I think it's just really good and really useful and, and to address some of the social issues that exist downtown, so thank you for bringing it forward. I don't see any, you know, glaring issues that exist with it, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I had one more question, Catlin. Just wondering about the timeframe for the application process or when that will be out and when you anticipate that first meeting.
So we want to have the application process, the, the material is already developed and ready to go with some tweaks, obviously, and a marketing plan will go as soon as it's approved and then we hope to have the meeting by September one.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll look for direction, council on eight point one point one. Counselor Dychuk.
Thank you, worship. I move that council approves terms of reference as presented and directs administration proceed with establishing the committee through the application process.
Thank you very much. Seconder, Counselor Whitey, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion at hand?
Your worship, did you want the change, the change you recommended in, as presented, like the Robert's Rule of Order, are we okay with as implied because that, it's being approved as presented, but you had asked for a change, so.
As amended with counsel, is that a friendly?
I think would be, I don't think would be unreasonable to assume that every one of the major committees, because the city overall, you know, by their orders, would order that there would be an application.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And seconder, okay, all right, with that, all in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you very much, Catlin. Thanks for bringing that up, city manager. Moving on to eight point one point two, I'll look to you, city manager.
Thank you, worship. For eight point one point two, proposed sale in northeast section of forty-eight twelve fifty-sixth avenue, I'll ask Wendy Wagner to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, your worship and council.
Good afternoon, Wendy.
Today we are bringing forward a recommendation that council approve the City of Lloydminster entering into a land sale agreement for a section of the northeast of forty-eight twelve fifty-sixth avenue. Considered as the subject lands for an area of one point zero three acres for a total land price of six hundred thousand dollars to the Lloydminster Interval Home Society. In addition to this, we ask that council direct fifty percent of the land sale revenue from the northeast of forty-eight twelve fifty-sixth avenue to the Martin Brown Redevelopment Plan. The Lloydminster Interval Home Society has been in conversation with administration since twenty sixteen to secure a location within the city. They have provided administration with an offer letter to purchase a section of land at forty-eight twelve fifty-sixth avenue. The subject lands would be developed following the Martin Brown Redevelopment Plan, the timelines and neighborhood aesthetics. The proposed development is projected to occur during the later phases of the redevelopment plan within the Martin Brown Redevelopment Plan, proposed phases. The development will maintain the visual cohesiveness and existing development in a broader area to ensure that this site integrates well into the neighborhood. The terms for completing the transaction are considered to be fair, reasonable, and reflect the appraised value and have been reviewed by legal. Administration would like to present the following options. That council approve the City of Lloydminster entering into a land agreement for approximately one point zero three acres of the northeast section of forty-eight twelve fifty-sixth avenue with the City of Lloydminster and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign, seal all necessary documents, that council not approve the land sale, that council request further information and that the item be brought forward to a future council meeting for decision. Were there any additional questions?
Thank you, Wendy. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. Thanks, Wendy. So the Martin Brown Redevelopment Plan was, I don't know if I want to call it hotly contested, but there was certainly a lot of feedback given during that whole community engagement phase.
Yes.
So taking all the information that we gathered from the community and everything else that we heard during those things, does this fit into exactly what the community said they expected for that site?
Within the redevelopment plan, it was stated that there would be a residential or small-scale development within that site, so it does fit within the plan. It has been discussed in great detail as to the expectations of the development to meet within the community standards so that they wouldn't build something of a grand scale, that it would meet all the community aesthetics and that they would be bringing something to that area, which one of the pieces when administration reviewed it would be the opportunity to take some of that revenue and put it back into the park in a sooner timeframe than what we would be able to.
Yeah, I think there, you know, there are things to consider when doing something of this size in that corner. Recently, I received a call from a resident upset about lighting, that apartments and things were, you know, newer buildings that had been put up, they were shining lights into their yard at all hours of the night and, you know, I think things like, a, a place like this is probably going to have some lighting and things to, to keep things safe and, and good there, just little things like that that I wonder about for the neighborhood and what the feedback might be on that type of thing because it's not like a regular house where you turn off the outside light and whatever, it's going to be a bigger scale than that.
Yeah.
So, you know, just things like that, that I, I want to make sure are on the radar as we go forward so that the area isn't, you know, something like that isn't missed so the area doesn't have an effect from that kind of thing.
With the development application process, all those pieces would need to be addressed as well, so there would be public engagement. The Interval Home said that they would bring forward all of their plans, how they would fence it so that it meets the neighborhood and so that they're not bringing a building or a structure or a new parcel to an area where it's going to bring on any adverse attention. So things like lighting, fencing, walkways, making sure that they're addressing everything and being very transparent with the public as to what their plans are for the site through the development process.
So is the sale of this site, if approved by council, pending feedback then?
It is still, it would still be in, it would still have to be approved through the development process, so that still has to go through public engagement and the standard development process through planning and engineering.
Yeah, public engagement, public hearing, back to, back to council?
It would come back to council, yeah. And so it has to be rezoned, subdivided and those standards have to be met and public, there would be public engagement and feedback on all of those pieces.
Yeah, I think just with the amount of engagement and feedback we received in this area, I think that some people might not know the process, I wanted to bring that up publicly today to say that, yes, there's going to be another opportunity for people to come and have that input going forward because they're saying, wow, they just went and sold that land, there is more time.
There is more time through the development process, there'll be another opportunity, multiple opportunities for the public to have feedback and ask questions.
Yeah, you bet. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Wendy and Counselor, Counselor Torrison, and then I'll go to Counsel Dychuk.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to clarify one of Counselor Buckingham's questions. So is the sale agreement subject to the zoning and all those other?
Approval of all of the development planning processes, so zoning, subdivision, which would include the public feedback during that process.
Which I think answers some of my other questions because I wasn't sure on subdivision whether or not the parcel was the exact kind of parameters of what we have there because it's a little bit wider than the road allowance and I'm not sure what the, what it was at this time, like when we actually did the area redevelopment plan. So if we still have to subdivide and they have to draw out what the parcel looks like and ensure it has the proper zoning still, then, you know, that'll be taken care of at that stage. Generally, I, I understand where Counselor Buckingham was going with some of those questions as far as ensuring the public has an opportunity for feedback and things like that, given that, you know, we did have quite a few that were not interested in having more residential in the area, would prefer it to be a park, things of that nature.
in the area, would prefer it to be a park, things of that nature. I do appreciate though, in the negotiations, administration acknowledging that and, and including, kind of throwing a bone to the neighborhood in that, the fifty percent that will be included for redevelopment of the area and, and park space or, or whatever that ends up being able to be actually done in that area. So, I do appreciate that, you know, I think that's going to be important to that neighborhood in terms of their quality of life, I think is going to be important, so, yeah, that's all. I think that it's a, a good idea at this stage as far as including those things in it, so, thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Dychuk.
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, when I look at this, I think there are a lot of pros and positives that could come out of it, I don't think that the amount of space that's going to be allocated for the new Interval Home will be much less in many ways, at least in terms of an actual footprint than where Martin Brown School was. And to councillor Buckingham's point, I know that we had a lot of lighting around the school in part for security of staff that were working there late at night and the parking lot in front of the building, so that wouldn't be a new piece, I think, if you were to look at a Martin Brown concept and, and a new concept, it'd be important for people to see that there are a lot of similarities. Secondly, I, I really, I'm pleased with the notion of investing in the park area. I believe parks need to be accessible by foot, on foot for youth, so they can go safely, not have to travel by vehicle with parents. Many parents don't have the time or the, the capacity to take their children to Bud Miller and that's the, the big trend in the city. Communities become more attractive, more valuable and, and, and really generate that whole sense of knowing your neighbor, which is I think one of the pieces in Lloydminster that, and I think certainly this council has seen as a priority with its actions it's taken, so that kids can literally walk across the street and go play in the park, parents can watch from their home while the kids are in there. And I think that's a plus that, that it's important to make sure everybody who lives in that neighborhood sees, because that's a piece that many neighborhoods would really want to see happen where, where they live.
Thanks councillor, councillor Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. So, I would agree with that councillor Dychuk, that's important to the neighborhood and the quality of life, as well as important to the women and children who will access the, the home for the supports that they need. So, I, I like this area because it has easy access to leisure, to recreation, to green space for those families and to a really lovely neighborhood, so that setting, I think the, the neighborhood, once this is developed, will really embrace them and, and certain that the Lloydminster Interval Home will, will reach out to make sure that they're part of the community as well. The one question that I had was, it states that council directs fifty percent of the land sale revenue and I'm really happy that you're investing that money back in. And so with a sale price of six hundred thousand, is there outstanding funds that need to be paid from that or what do we expect that fifty percent to look like ballpark?
That will be based on what the development costs of that site were, so the demolition of the Martin Brown, original Martin Brown site and all, and those pieces. So, once we have all of those pieces totaled, then we'll have the exact fund amount and then we'll be able to determine what we can move forward with.
Right, so about fifty percent of the net that we get, okay, thanks very much.
Just to be clear on that, the, this is, there's offsite levies over and above this purchase price and that is not included in the fifty percent that would go back into the park, so we, because that has to go right to the offsite levy accounts that we attribute, that we collect for, we have to put it into those for offsite levies for roads, water, sewer and storm.
Thank you, I've got councillor Dychuk and then back to you councillor Torrison.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I'm, I'm very pleased with the location and I think that it's, it's a win-win for both the, the nonprofit as well as for the, for the neighborhood. There's been a lot of effort putting in, put into finding this location and we looked at many different areas, so, you know, after five years, I think it's about time that we found one and I think that this is a winner. So, yeah, there's a little bit of logistics to get done there, but I think it's, overall, if this goes through, it'll be, it'll be a great location.
Councillor Torrison.
Thank you, your worship. Just something I wanted to clarify from councillor Mayor's question is, are we talking fifty percent of the revenue or fifty percent of the profits? Because it says fifty percent of the revenue, which would mean three hundred thousand dollars, but I, I just wasn't clear to me what number we're talking about.
It is fifty percent, it'll be of the revenue or the total amount, so it'd be three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Fair enough, yeah, that's what, I was just confused because the question was as far as the costs that went into it and things like that, so, so we're clear, it's three hundred thousand dollars, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, that's my, I apologize, that was my error, when we were looking at what the costs that had already gone into that parcel, we did take into consideration the costs of the demolition and cleanup of that Martin Brown site.
That's terrific. Any other comments or questions? I think as councillor Fagin said, this has been a long-going process for both council to set direction with Martin Brown, we heard very clearly from the community, the Interval Home plays a significant role in our community and certainly they've been working with city council and administration for some time to try and find a location and I think this is very fitting and as we talked about, the footprint is not much different from the former Martin Brown School and, you know, that makes me feel much better that we're not giving up park space that was originally park space, originally when it was created is that area and redevelopment that will add to the community instead of taking away. So, I think it's a, it's a win-win for all parties. But with that, if there's no further discussion, I'll welcome motion councillor Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I'll make that motion, that council approve the city of Lloydminster entering into a land sale agreement for approximately one point zero three acres of the northeast section of forty-eight twelve fifty-sixth Avenue with the city of Lloydminster and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. I'm just reading that now. Is it with the city of Lloydminster or with the...
It should say the interval, yeah, that'll have to be corrected, yes.
Do I need to reread that or...
Yeah, and I've also got an, an amount as well, is that what you have in your motion?
And it's Lloydminster Interval Home Society, is that right?
Society, yes.
Good, thank you. So, starting over, I'll make that motion, that council approve the city of Lloydminster entering into a land sale agreement for six hundred thousand dollars for approximately one point zero three acres of the northeast section of forty-eight twelve fifty-sixth Avenue with the Lloydminster Interval Home Society and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
That's terrific. Secondary, councillor Whiting, thank you. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Councillor, would you add the second portion of that motion, there's a second motion to go with that, if you have it there?
Uh, thank you. That council directs fifty percent of the land sale revenue from the northeast of forty-eight twelve fifty-sixth Avenue to the Martin Brown redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Secondary, councillor Dychuk, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Not seeing any, I'll call, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, Wendy.
Thank you, your worship and council.
I believe we've reached the two o'clock hour, so with that, we will go back to agenda item number seven point one. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for bylaw number twenty-one dash twenty-two one, Fifty-seventh Street Permanent Road Closure. I would like to note before we begin that during a public hearing, we ask that you respect the views of everyone here and allow each person their time to speak without interruption. Each person wishing to speak has up to five minutes to make a presentation to council. If you do wish to speak, please state your name for the record and whether you are in support of or opposed to the proposed bylaw. When you are finished speaking, please remain at the front as council may wish to ask you questions. All discussions of council members, city staff and delegations shall be directed to the chairperson. Any questions brought forward by the public which are not able to be addressed during the meeting will be done so at the next council meeting. Council will not debate this matter during the hearing and the decision rather regarding whether or not to grant the bylaw further readings will be dealt with following the public hearing. I declare the public hearing for bylaw number twenty-two one, twenty-two, twenty-two one, Fifty-seventh Street Permanent Road Closure open at... Two oh two. Two oh two P M. I would ask the city clerk to confirm whether or not the public hearing has been advertised in accordance with the applicable legislation and to summarize the purpose of this hearing.
I confirm that this hearing has been advertised and notice has been provided in accordance with the applicable legislation. This public hearing was advertised on June twenty-fourth, July first and July eighth, 2021, additions, in additions of the Meridian Source. The purpose of this public hearing is for bylaw twenty-one dash two zero two one, Fifty-seventh Street Permanent Road Closure.
Thank you, city clerk. I will now ask if there is anyone wishing to speak who is opposed to the proposed bylaw. Not seeing anyone come forward, I will now ask if there is anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the proposed bylaw. Not seeing anyone come forward, I will now ask if there is anyone else who is affected by the proposed bylaw that wishes to speak at this time. As no members of the public were in attendance to speak on the matter, I declare the public hearing for bylaw number twenty-one dash twenty-two one closed at... Two oh three. Two oh three P M. Moving on to the public hearing for bylaw number twenty dash twenty-two one, the text amendment to the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen warehouse sales in the I-2 district. I declare the public hearing for bylaw number twenty dash twenty-two one, the text amendment to the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen warehouse sales to I-2 district open at... Two oh four. Two oh four P M. I would ask the city clerk to confirm whether or not the public hearing has been advertised in accordance with the applicable legislation and to summarize the purpose of the hearing today.
I confirm that this public hearing has been advertised and notice has been provided in accordance with the applicable legislation. This public hearing was advertised in the June twenty-fourth, July first and July eighth, 2021, additions of the Meridian Source. The purpose of this public hearing is for bylaw number twenty dash twenty-two one, a text amendment to land use bylaw number five twenty dash, or twenty sixteen warehouse sales in the I-2 district.
Thank you, city clerk. I will now ask if there is anyone wishing to speak who is opposed to the proposed bylaw. Not seeing anyone coming forward, I will now ask if there is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed bylaw. Not seeing anyone come forward, I will now ask if there is anyone else who is affected by the proposed bylaw that wishes to speak at this time. As no members of the public were in attendance to speak on the matter, I declare the public hearing for bylaw number twenty dash twenty-two one closed at... Two oh five. Two oh five P M. Returning back to the agenda, we'll be moving on to item eight point two point one.
Thank you, your worship, for eight point two point one, assessment review board member appointments, I will ask the city clerk, Doug Rodwall, to present.
City clerk.
Thank you, your worship and council. The item before you is the assessment review, review board member appointments and the recommendation is that council appoint Jason Whiting and Darrell Dunn as assessment review board members for the city of Lloydminster for a three-year period ending December thirty-first, 2023. In accordance with bylaw number one, 2015, the city, uh, there is a resolution required to appoint members to the, the city, of the city to the local assessment review board and composite assessment review boards. A R B members are required to receive training prescribed by the Alberta Municipal Government Act and the matters relating to assessment complaints regulation. Both Mr. Whiting and Mr. Dunn have successfully completed that training. All, all other existing board members have also successfully completed that training. The options are that council appoint Jason Whiting and Darrell Dunn as assessment review board members for the city of Lloydminster for a three-year period ending December thirty-first, 2023, not to appoint the, those, those individuals or to request further information. This, this item is in alignment with the following strategic area, delivering good governance, council's approval is required to appoint assessment review board members and in governance implications in compliance with bylaw number one dash twenty fifteen, the city of Lloydminster requires a resolution to appoint members to the city to the local assessment review board. I'll turn it back to council.
Thank you, city clerk. Any questions or comments? So, by appointing additional members to the board, it gives, ensures that we always have three members hopefully available for an assessment review board from that perspective and that's having local people, be it members of council or residents of the community, are very important, so thank both Jason and Darrell for stepping forward and offering their services to assist. If there's no further discussion, I'll look for direction on eight point two point one, the assessment review board member appointments. Councillor Dychuk.
Thanks, your worship. I move that council appoint Jason Whiting and Darrell Dunn as assessment review board members for the city of Lloydminster for a three-year period ending December thirty-first, 2023.
Thank you very much. Secondary, councillor Mayor, thank you very much. Any further discussion to the motion on the floor? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. If you would, please Denise, thank you. Moving on to eight point two point two, city manager.
Thank you, your worship, for eight point two point two, tobacco industry health cost recovery fee, I'll once again ask the city clerk, Doug Rodwall, to present.
City clerk.
Thank you, your worship and council. The item before you is the tobacco industry health recovery cost fee and the recommendation is that council approve the seconding of a motion being moved by the city of Airdrie to request the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association to advocate to the Alberta government to use the Crown's Right of Recovery Act to establish a five percent levy on all Alberta revenues collected by major tobacco manufacturers and importers. Funds collected would be redirected to support effective programs and strategies to reduce the prevention, reduce and prevent tobacco use in Alberta. The city of Airdrie has asked the city of Lloydminster to second, second motion and direct that the five percent levy on revenues be collected by major tobacco manufacturers and importers. Once again, funds collected would be redirected to support effective programs and strategies to reduce and prevent tobacco use in Alberta. Tobacco use affects every Albertan municipality and the residents from cleanup, environmental and health perspective. Taxes collected on tobacco products in Alberta raise approximately seven hundred and fifty million annually. As the cost of tobacco use exceeds one billion annually, all Albertans pay for the negative consequence of tobacco use. Despite the enormous burden that tobacco places on society and our healthcare system, tobacco companies are presently not required to pay any compensation for harm beyond the general corporate and payroll taxes. These companies are located outside of Alberta, so consequently the provincial taxes that they do pay are negligible. The vast majority of tobacco taxes are paid for by consumers, not tobacco companies. Many Alberta businesses are required to pay for provincial cleanup costs resulting from their harmful and negligent activities, whether damage was deliberate or not, examples include oil and gas companies, trucking and rail companies, utility companies, auto insurance carriers. This is the same polluter pays principles that can be applied to tobacco companies. Like the examples provided, the government of Alberta can recover the cost of health services caused or contributed to by tobacco-related wrong under the Crown's Right of Recovery Act. The city of Lloydminster currently collects funds from local tobacco and cannabis retailers through the business license fees. These fees are redistributed to the community supporting a variety of public and non-public initiatives, nonprofit initiatives, sorry. The options are that council approves the seconding of the motion, council not approve the seconding of the motion, or that council requests further information.
With that, I'll turn it back to you, your worship. Thank you, city clerk. Councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, your worship. So, I assume that this is step two in the process of getting this on the A U M A...
Resolution.
Resolution session in November for the annual convention, correct?
It is. I was approached by one of the councillors from the city of Airdrie, they are, the city of Airdrie was very impressed with the work that our city has done and they took the initiative of this resolution, but they felt that, based on the Lloyd, the city of Lloyd's involvement in tobacco use reduction and harm reduction, they felt that it would be a great motion to second and I indicated, I spoke to the city clerk, we, he reviewed the resolution that was presented here, attached to today's meeting and felt that it was a reasonable resolution. Again, it is a resolution that has to hit the floor of the A U M A and each resolution has to be seconded by a fellow member of A U M A, so we would be seconding that motion if the council approves that today at the convention, but it does have to be seconded to make it to the resolution committee.
Yeah, and I think, I just wanted to bring that up now because I think the general public might not realize that this comes to a, on the floor at the A U M A conference every year, just like it would at the Soma Conference in Saskatchewan, we're just seconding a potential motion that's going to be debated and voted on by the entire membership of the A U M A at that conference, so this isn't committing us to anything necessarily going forward, it's allowing this resolution to be presented at the resolution session in November.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. So, thanks for that question councillor Buckingham, because I think it is important that people know what the process is and, and I had to do a little bit of research to understand where we would go from seconding this to where that would go to the resolutions at A U M A conference, so I, I just wanted to, to comment on this. Lloydminster should be so proud for the work that they've done on tobacco reduction and, and the leader... the leader that they are in promoting tobacco-free community. And so our licensing fee that we have is the envy of many communities, and I anticipate that we'll see more communities who are adopting that. This would be an opportunity for the Alberta government to adopt that provincially where they could require a licensing fee to sell tobacco products in Alberta, and then part of that licensing fee would be this 5% levy that would go back into investing into tobacco reductions and the Alberta Tobacco Reduction Strategy to really reduce those tobacco-related harms. And when we look at the impact on community, rather than, you know, more than just the 4,000 lives that are lost in Alberta to tobacco use every year, that there's also that greater impact on our environment and also, you know, cost to employers. So we know that tobacco users cost employers about 5,000 more per year than non-users. So there's some significant costs associated with tobacco use in Alberta. This would put about $20 to $25 million back into investing into tobacco reduction. So I think it's really a great initiative, and certainly would support that.
Thank you, council. Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. Now, I don't presume, based on what I'm hearing, that I'm going to sway or persuade anyone any different way. And keep in mind, this is coming from someone whose wife is a chemotherapy nurse and gives people chemo regularly, and some of those people have things like lung cancer or different ailments that came from smoking. But this is one of those ones where if it was at AUMA, I would probably vote against it at AUMA, just because I think it's outside of our jurisdiction. I understand, being a promoter of health and quality of life and promoting healthy lifestyles, I just, generally speaking, draw the line when it gets into someone else's sandbox. If there was, if there was a significant cost that we were looking to recover as a local municipality related to our programs and services or keeping the streets clean, things like that, I think I would look at it differently. But in this case, this is encouraging the province to do something that's good for them, and that they should really be doing it on their own. To me, I just, I prefer to stay into our own kind of, our own sandbox. I'm probably the only one in that scenario, but for that reason, I'll probably be voting against, just because I believe that, you know, this isn't, this isn't our local issue fight. We have a lot of, a lot of important resolutions that'll come from that, and for me, I think AUMA needs to focus on ensuring we have sustainable funding for our, for our programs and services and some really other important things related to municipalities that I would prefer to support, rather than things that, to me, are provincial responsibilities or federal responsibilities as it relates to tobacco, or provincial responsibilities as it relates to funding healthcare. So, thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Merritt.
So, so thanks for those comments, Counselor Torson, and I certainly appreciate them. I think, you know, I'm probably on the other side of the fence from you, where I see the harms associated with tobacco use in our community, and that we have a responsibility to really, you know, provide a healthy, safe community for our residents, and I believe that's part of our strategic plan as well, is that, that we do that. We would benefit as a municipality, or the potential to benefit, and if there was a $25 million investment back into the province, that we could apply for some funding to support either, you know, cleanups, that environmental piece around tobacco control, or just tobacco cessation and prevention initiatives. So I think there is an opportunity for, for our municipality to benefit from this as well as all municipalities in the province could benefit.
Thank you, councillor Merritt. Counselor Fagin.
Thank you, your worship, and there's no question that the tobacco companies can afford it. I did a little research there, and in 2019, the three major tobacco companies grossed $3.4 billion and netted a total of $1.36. So they've got some, they've got some cash, and I think that it's, it's fair for them to pay their fair share, you know, to Alberta as well. So, just a little stat there.
Thank you, councillor. Counselor Merritt.
One more comment. Thank you, councillor Fagin, for that, because when I look at the costs associated with tobacco use in our province, and the, the costs that are borne by, by the tobacco industry, and realize that it's minimal, maybe if they have an office in Calgary with a few staff, they have payroll taxes, or they have a little bit of property tax, they might invest into that community or something, but, but really, they're not paying into the costs associated with tobacco use in our province. And I think that, you know, we look at oil companies, auto industries, mind you, that's consumer-paid, but like, there's all these other industries that polluter-paid kind of policy that was mentioned in the briefing document. We, we really need the tobacco industry to, to pay into the costs associated with selling a product that kills 50% of the people that use it as directed. So I think that it's time for tobacco industry to actually make that investment back into the costs of tobacco control in Alberta.
Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say again, I 100% agree that the tobacco companies have the money and should be doing it. Again, is this a municipal priority?
Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, your worship. I tend to agree with councillor Torson on it. You know, one of the things that drives me nuts sometimes is the municipal level going what councillor Torson calls outside their sandbox, you know, and I think potentially that's there. I don't, on the other hand, I agree that there should be something done, just like everybody else agrees. And then I will say that I think that this conversation will come up exactly this way, or should come up exactly this way at the resolution session. I have a strong feeling that someone will bring that viewpoint forward during the resolution session, and it might be interesting to see it debated there and see what the municipalities feel is the best way forward as a whole. But I would agree that, you know, keeping within our sandbox is a good idea most of the time.
Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. Two things. One, I just want to ensure that the mayor didn't beat any of the records from last weekend, and we have a few items left, but, so it'll take a minute. No, just the other thing is, I do want to clarify for our own council that assuming this does pass and everything, I won't speak against it at AUMA because that would look incredibly awkward.
Appreciate that, councillor. I think that the, there's, I hear the thoughts around the table, and I think the important thing to remember is, we have some responsibilities of advocating, and this is an opportunity to advocate. We're not setting policy. And I hear what you said very clearly, councillor Torson, that we do have times that we advocate for our community, and I think we advocate for the greater community and other communities. And I think that's the purpose of AUMA, to send, if this resolution makes it to the floor and is debated and passes, it sends a general consensus to the elected officials at a provincial level that this is an issue that we believe as representatives of the residents of Alberta, urban residents, that this is important. I think that's the important piece to remember. I hear what you're saying, and absolutely, I think we all can agree very much, we don't like the federal government playing in our sandbox when they continue to do it because it flows downhill, as we know, from federal to provincial to the municipality, and it's very hard to move things forward uphill. But at the same time, I think that we have the opportunity to influence the greater good of our community through advocating, and that's really what we're doing here, is advocating. It will become, if it makes it, as I said before, and passes on the convention floor, the province will still have the final say, and this is one methodology of getting it to that message. We work with our MLAs on a regular basis and government ministers, but I think our association also sees value in lobbying as an association on the greater good. Counselor.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. The other thing I was just going to say, and it's much of what I wanted to say, it's been said, the only thing I would point out is that, you know, healthcare has been touted as one of the largest expense, it is the largest expense in most provinces across Canada. Secondarily, they're looking at making cuts to the people who are the orderlies, the, you know, some of the lowest wage earners, and, and so this is a possible source of revenue for our provincial government to look at, to offset the costs and fees that are affiliated and associated with the kind of work that, you know, our councillor Torson has spoken to. So I agree, it's not within our sandbox, but it seems that perhaps there, we could help enlighten some of the policymakers to recognize there are other sources of funding and ways of balancing budgets without simply just cutting and really looking at some of the people who are inflicting some of the costs to the healthcare system.
Any further discussion? Not seeing any. I will look for direction on 8.2.2, the Tobacco Industry Health Cost Recovery Fee Resolution. Counselor Merritt.
Thank you, your worship. I'll make that motion, that council approve the seconding of a motion being moved by the City of Airdrie to request the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association to advocate to the Alberta government to use the Crown's Right of Recovery Act to establish a 5% levy on all Alberta revenues collected by major tobacco manufacturers and importers. Funds collected will be redirected to support effective programs and strategies to reduce and prevent tobacco use in Alberta.
Thank you, councillor. Secondary. Counselor Fagin, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Not seeing any. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to 8.2.3. Counselor Fagin, you are going to excuse yourself. Counselor Fagin?
Yep.
You're going to excuse yourself from this?
Okay.
So noted. And moving on. I still got quorum? Okay, we're okay, so, all right. I'll look to the city manager for 8.2.3.
Thank you, your worship, for 8.2.3 SDAB Member Appointments. I'll ask the city clerk, Doug Rodwell, to present.
And just to clarify why councillor Fagin stepped out of the room, is on the motion, we had forgotten to include councillor Fagin as a, as an appointment to this board as well. So we'll ask that that be added to the recommendation, that Glenn Fagin be appointed to the board as well, and he has stepped out in the same manner in which councillor Whiting did this morning, or earlier in the meeting.
Just for clarification, city clerk, then, when we go to make the motion, is councillor Fagin at 23 or 22?
He'll be at December 31st, 2021.
Okay.
And I can explain that to council if they so choose at the time. So the subdivision, the matter is the subdivision Development Appeal Board Member Appointments, and the recommendation is that council appoint the following public members to the subdivision and development appeal board. Sean Davidson, Dean Seidberg, and Bernie Alsfer for terms expiring December 31st, 2023. Larry McConnell, Joe Rooks, and Tom Schinhold for terms expiring December 31st, 2022, and Glenn Fagin to the term expiring December 31st, 2021. The subdivision and development appeal board, here's subdivision development appeals within the City of Lloydminster. The new SDAB bylaw was passed in March 2021 and amends the board from being comprised of five members to seven members. Administration publicly posted and recruited two new board positions, all existing and new members of the subdivision development appeal board, as well as the administrative staff attended the provincially required training in June 2021. Administration is proposing to stagger the expiry of the board members' terms to ensure the stability on the board with experienced members as new members join. Currently councillor Fagin is appointed as a member of council to the subdivision and development appeal board. Councillor Fagin and councillor Daechak are both certified SDAB members, as they have completed the provincially required training in June 2021. One member of council sits on the SDAB board, and that member of council is appointed annually during the committee and board approved by council each year, and that's why we're asking for councillor Fagin, just to be appointed as part of this. The options are, is that council appoint the members, the SDAB as requested, council not appoint them, or council asks for further information. Alignment with strategic plan is this item is in alignment with the following strategic area: Delivering good governance. Appointment of board members is in compliance with municipal and provincial legislative requirements. Bylaw number 7, 2021, the subdivision development appeal board bylaw requires that all members of the board be appointed by resolution of council for term, specified term not to exceed three years. The costs associated with the subdivision and the development appeal board are included in the annual operating budgets. And back to you, your worship.
Thank you, city clerk. Questions, comments? Counselor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. I was waiting for this item for a comment generally. As there is an individual on the assessment review board, as well as a couple on the subdivision and development appeal board, I just think that it's, it's great that individuals that did run for council that were not successful are finding other ways to, you know, put their name forward, to help in the community, and to learn a bit more about planning and subdivisions and things like that. I think it shows just generally really good initiative, and that hearts are in the right place. Other than that, you know, it's, it's just great to, to be able to get some new names on there, get some circulation going, because a lot of the times, it's the same handful of individuals that do it forever, and, you know, it's not really fair. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, councillor. I have to agree with you from the perspective, I think it's important that we have constant rejuvenation. If it's being in a committee, be it council or anywhere else, having some transition is always a good thing, and having them staggered, as the city clerk outlined, does ensure that we have ample opportunity to find people that may not be interested in renewing their, their board membership or being reappointed at that time, and, and see some transition. So I think it's a great list, covers it off.
Just wanted to clarify one thing. When I said not fair, I mean to the individuals who have no one else to replace them, oftentimes.
Absolutely.
I don't mean not fair to people who want to do it but can't.
Get shamed on the board because there's nobody there to fill in those spots, so I think it's important that, that way. Any other comments? Counselor Buckingham.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll entertain the motion.
Thank you. I move the council appoint the following public members to the subdivision and development appeal board. Sean Davidson, Dean Segberg, and Bernal Alsfer for terms that expire December 31st, 2023. Larry McConnell, Joe Rooks, and Tom Schinhold for expiry dates of December 31st, 2022, and councillor Glenn Fagin to a term that expires December 31st, 2021.
Thank you. Secondary. Councillor Whiting, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Moving on to the agenda of 8.3, to the city manager.
Thank you, your worship, for 8.3.1 Financial Statements for Month Ending June 30th, 2021. I'll ask our CFO, Denise McDonal, to present.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Before you are the financial statements for the month ending June 30th, 2021. You've included in your agenda was the quarterly financial statement, so I'll just go through some highlights to save some time. So on the first page is the Statement of Financial Position, our balance sheet. You'll see investments there are down in comparison to year end, and that is due to number of investments that matured. Our average investment return or interest rate earning on those investments as a whole is 1.59%, and we're earning 1.28% on the short term and 3.2% on the long term. Land and inventory for resale, we, it increased slightly due to purchasing of some land on the northeast. Tax receivable in Granton Lou, we applied our taxes in May, and so those are applied there. Taxes and, sorry, trade and other receivables, it's gone up substantially since year end. Included in there is a 1.6 wastewater treatment plant grant receivable, as well as utilities receivable of over $2 million. Under financial liabilities, accounts payable and accrued liabilities, it includes the school taxes of 11.4. When we go to deferred revenues, it includes capital grants and carryforwards from 2020. MSI alone is sitting at 9.7 million, and AMWWP for the wastewater treatment plant is sitting at 2.8 in that deferred revenue, and will be moved over when that, when those programs are completed or closed out at the end of the year. Long-term debt, you can see that we reduced our debt slightly. And work in progress includes 6.7 from year, carryforward from year end, and includes protective services work of 1.2 million, transportation 1.7 million, environmental services, including the wastewater treatment plant, 7.6 million. Parks, Rec and Culture has 2.9 million in projects going. On the second page is our operating by, by object. So what we tried to do here, and it needs a little bit of explanation, is we're trying to transition to be a little more transparent with the taxation. So previously, we had municipal taxes, and the school taxes were included in there and netted out as education requisitions. So you'll see that school taxes on here are showing up, our municipal taxes are showing up as 36.7 million. A little lower down, we have education taxes at 12.8, and seamless taxes of 2.4, but neither one of those numbers have a budget. So that kind of skews our totals, but we, we want to work towards it being more transparent. And when we do the 2022 budget, we will include those budget numbers in there for you. Under expenses, you'll see the education requisition, so that's the money going out to them at 15.2, and that's the addition of education taxes and the seamless taxes. So that, you'll see it also on the next page, that it will skew the numbers. So when you're comparing our total revenue... So when you're comparing our total revenues, sitting at seventy-one point six million, compared to the previous year at fifty-seven, it looks higher because those numbers are in there. User fees and sales of goods, uh, due to COVID, we are down thirty-six percent in the first, in the first two quarters. Utility revenues are down seven percent, uh, due to lower consumption. Penalties and cost of taxes includes fine revenue, and photo radar is still slightly down in that first quarter, even though it's very comparative to the previous year. Licenses and penalties includes, uh, business licenses and development permits. Both of those are up in comparison to the previous year. And then when we look at expenditures, salary, wages, and benefits, uh, so our nineteen percent below budget for the first six months of twenty-one, uh, due to positions being partially vacant. Salaries were budgeted without consideration for COVID. However, COVID is still affecting most departments in the first two quarters, which resulted in lower hours worked. When we look at contracted services, it is slightly down from the previous year, and it's sitting at thirty-two percent below budget for the first six months. Major cost savings realized with no residential snow clearing contractors hired in the first quarter. Uh, the next item on there is goods and materials. Our thirty-five percent below budget for the first six months of twenty-one. There is thirty thousand savings in sand and salting costs in roads. Chemical at the water treatment plant is also down thirty thousand, and lower fuel costs of fifty thousand. Repairs and maintenance of fifty thousand, uh, costs to fleet. On the next, um, item is income statement by department. So I've just highlighted the planning and development area. Uh, is up in comparison to twenty-twenty. We've only have two properties sold in Q-two. Development permits are trending above budget, mainly due to higher-than-anticipated home-based business applications. Several bigger projects that require higher-dollar billing permits, such as the Fire Hall and the Newswastewater Treatment Plant, and the School Division capital work. Under Rec and Culture is up in comparison to twenty-twenty. All facilities are, are trending below budget as reduced, uh, demand. Sorry, this is on revenue side. I must have skipped a page. What is revenue? Well, um, all facilities are trending below budget as re, reduced demand and capacity limitations have greatly reduced the revenue generation capabilities. BioClean Aquatic Center limited public swimming numbers. The arena saw much lower demand as public health orders restricted games. Ice plant was turned on in the month, a month earlier in February versus March. So that reduced our revenue generation. Then when, when we look at expenditures, again, this is where the school requisition will have an impact. So, um, school requisition, if, if you remember, was fifteen million. And so you take that out, and then you'll see that the general government numbers on expenditures are all averaging below, below, um, budget. Rec and Culture. Majority of Rec facilities incurred a high proportion of their expenses in the spring, summer, and fall, Q-two and Q-three. COVID has resulted in many departments incurring lower salary and wages than budgeted. All departments are trending below budget. Um, on the bottom line, uh, government transfers for capital, the one point one, that is our Alberta Federal Gas tax revenue that we receive, and it, uh, is placed in reserves until the projects are completed and then drawn from reserves, where all the other revenues for grants are put into deferred revenues. Our next page shows our forecasting for reserves. So you can see, um, there's no change in our restricted reserves from year-end, and our unrestricted reserves, though, though they are increasing due to budget, budgeting to those reserves. You can see that our forecasted, uh, year-end balance is substantially lower because we are utilizing those reserves for capital projects versus taxing, taxing a second time for them. On the next page, you will see our capital budget versus actual. So we have sixteen projects that are complete at this time, and hundred and nine in progress, thirty-eight not started, for a total of a hundred and sixty-three projects. Um, actual work, uh, started in twenty-twenty-one is at nine point three million, uh, comparing to the budget of eighty-four million point two. With that, I open the floor for any questions.
Thank you, CFO. Questions, comments? Counselor Torson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I think you explained all of the major variances that would have been, you know, an issue, um, at all, but I, I didn't really see anything. One was just more of a general question, and I'd imagine... I, I'm not certain, I guess, the way we did budget it. Because when we were at this point last year, uh, it was a, it was a top-up, toss-up. We had really no idea what the remainder of the year would look like. So I'm just curious, um, how heavy were we second half of the year in terms of needing extra staffing at facilities like recreation, things like that? Uh, versus, um, you know, what, sorry. Yeah, wha, what are our expectations now? Have they changed at all? Or do we think that, you know, on kind of the operational type of items, we'll be below budget, potentially?
Thank you for the question. I suspect the second half will be closer to budget. Uh, we did not budget for any COVID effects. So we budgeted what we expected would happen without COVID, so we should be safe for the rest of the year.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just wasn't sure, because, you know, there was a time when you require extra cleaning and extra staff around, and, and, you know, everything seemed like it, it required more cost, uh, let's say, at a certain point last year with limited revenues, so. But we're expecting kind of regular year, normal revenues, normal costs, for the second half of the year. That's fine. Thank you. Uh, other than that, July nineteenth, plus you would have had to have this done by, you know, midway through last week. That's, that's, uh, that's pretty close to the gold standard of accurate financial statements, to have them done by that point, to have them ready for the meeting, so. Good job on that. Like, quite frankly, I, I, I'm aware of how this works normally in, in what I do, and you have a month-end close, but you gotta wait a few days for things to come in. So to the fact that they're here, I trust them and believe that they're reasonably accurate at this point. Sure, there's other stuff that may have come in after the fact, but you'll catch it by the end of the year. It'll be fine, and by next month, I guess, or next quarter. So, no, it's just really impressive to have it there. I even caught myself, um, as one does, uh, caught myself looking at old financial statements, just to kind of get a perspective of where we are from a, uh, cash and investment, deferred revenue, kind of look at all those liquid assets and those big liabilities, and look at that, where we are with that, with our restricted and unrestricted reserves. And it blows me away, the position that we've, we've purposefully put ourselves into, that we have the ability to make adjustments when we need to. Could it get better? Absolutely, it could get better. Do, do we have to have the right balance relative to what's going on in our local economy? For sure. But I think that we've, uh, we've consciously made an effort to do that, and we now are seeing the fruits of our labor in that. We have had the abilities to make adjustments on the go. We've had the abilities to, you know, increase project budgets if they absolutely needed to, if it's important to us. Uh, so yeah, just generally, I, I just applaud the entire team, not just the finance team, for everyone kind of being lockstep in making sure that we're heading in that direction. And, and it just impresses me when I look at them. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, Your Worship. If you look at, take a look at the, uh, what's the name of the title of this? The Appendix One, Capital Budget Versus Actual Detailed List. Uh, everything seems to be in line, and what you notice, if you look through it in detail, is that the only things that are extremely over budget, and I say extremely, which is kind of a loose term, at fourteen and twenty-four percent over, are equipment purchases. Um, so are, obviously, our, our purchases of like the wingmore and the trucks and so on and so forth that are in there are coming in at a higher cost, which is to be expected right now with the supply and demand issues. Can you speak maybe to what we're doing to prepare for other things like that that may be coming our way as the cost of everything continue to go up versus what we've actually budgeted? We can expect to see more of that in the next, next one, I'm suspecting. But that's a guess.
Yeah, so there's, there are some projects that we're, we have on our radar, if you want to call it that, and so we're currently reviewing the scope of the project. Um, some of the details of the project and seeing what, what adjustments we can make if needed, whether we continue with the project, whether we don't continue with the project. And so some of those are being reviewed right now. Uh, some of them are just, we just can't get equipment. Uh, in some cases, half-done trucks was a good example. Uh, there's a few of those. Steel is another one that's creating some angst right now in the construction industry. So we're, we're aware of those, and, uh, there'll be some that probably in the August meeting will come to council for review, uh, for whether it's a funding issue or a change of scope of projects, so.
Yeah, not just a city issue, this is an issue for every industry and everybody out there. But if you look at that list, work projects and hands-on things and are all on-budget, under-budget, whatever, it's that actual capital purchase piece that it is to be expected, and I'm just afraid we're going to see a lot more of that going forward. So knowing that we're taking a look at that and being on top of that is probably going to be key, and it's completely out of our control.
Yeah, we've also had projects under budget, too, so there's, there's a mix on the other side as well, so.
But I just, my point, not saying that we went over budget, what are we doing? I'm just saying that the only things that are over are things that are beyond our control and, and things that we can't really do anything about. And I expect that we're going to see a few more of those examples as we move further into the year.
Yeah, we had, yeah, no, Dawn just mentioned, we did have some that were, you know, the Greater, as an example, was a hundred and fifty under budget. And so we expected probably a little bit more on, I think it was on tariffs and price of stuff, and it came in. So it's a bit of, it's been a mixed bag of a little bit of everything, so, but, yeah. No, take your point, and we're certainly aware of those, and we'll be, um, we're reviewing them as we need to, for sure.
And at the end of the day, it speaks to Counselor Torson's point about great leadership and great budgeting from, from you, your team, and every team below you. You know, we're, we're close there on everything we need to be close on, we're planning properly. And, you know, in the last number of years, I think it's gone nothing but up. I think it's been really, really good, and thank you guys for all the work you're doing.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Dycheck.
Thanks, Worship. Yeah, the, the other thing is interesting for me, is I was looking at our capital projects, because one of the things I know that has been interesting to watch is that we've tried to moderate the number of projects we've taken on, and, you know, we, how many carryforwards do we have, and do we want to do that? And what's, what's fascinating is that in twenty-twenty-one, we're, we have in-progress about two-thirds, sixty-seven percent, twenty-twenty, or sixty-six percent not started yet, twenty-three percent in twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty, twenty-two percent. So our, our percentages are, are almost identical relative to each of those years in terms of how many we've undertaken, how many we've completed. Uh, and yet the numbers probably vary significantly as well. So it's, it's kind of, there's some consistency in terms of what we're doing, I guess. Nothing else, particularly on capital projects.
Yeah, one of our goals, I would say, is to have the completed column a little higher, uh, this year. Uh, we had, we had a few more carryovers than we wanted, and so we'll, we're doing our best to... And some of them are out of our control this year with, with supply and things like that. But we are doing our best to get more of them completed this year than we have in years past, so.
Counselor Merrick.
Thank you, Your Worship. So just a, a comment. Um, when I went through the financial statements, I was thinking, well, I think this is the third time I've seen this type of financial statement from you. But what I really appreciate is, is the commentary that goes along with them. So thanks for that. It, it kind of takes some of the guesswork out and answers some of the questions that I have. And, and it's helping me kind of learn the, the process that you go through and, and, uh, understand the financials better for the city, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. I'll look for direction on eight point three point one. Uh, financial statements for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Counselor Torson.
I move that council accept the financial statements for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one as presented.
Secondary, Counselor Buckingham, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, CFO. Moving on to eight point four. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Worship, for eight point four point one. Consultant Award: New Event Arena Detail Design Architectural Services. I will ask Joel Turcot to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and Council.
Good afternoon, Joel.
Um, so the Consultant Award: New Event Arena Detail Design Architectural Services. Uh, recommend, recommendation that council award the contract for the new event arena detailed design architect services to TBD Architect and Urban Planning in the amount of one million, four hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty dollars plus GST, and a ten percent contingency of a hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars plus GST, to be funded from capital project number two zero seven four zero zero eight, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. Additionally, that council approve one thousand, oh, sorry, one million, uh, twenty-seven thousand and eighty-five dollars in the twenty-twenty-two capital plan to allocate to capital project number two zero seven four zero zero eight. Uh, the issue, as you know, the Centennial Civic Center is nearing the end of its useful life and requires replacement. Uh, to provide a little background, during the November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen GPC meeting, administration notified the committee that a high-level review of city-owned com, community facilities were underway. Internal and external reviews were conducted to evaluate economic and operational feasibility, identify and address any operational constraints, and ensure capital investments were serving the community at the highest priority level. The internal reviews were performed by the City of Lloydminster Building Committee, comprised of city staff. The external reviews were performed by ACI Architects and Reed Jones Kristofson Engineers, who released the City of Lloydminster Recreation Facilities Analysis and Plant Assessment Report on August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. The resulting City Community Facilities two thousand nineteen building report was presented to council on October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. From November two thousand nineteen to July twenty twenty, Gibbs-Gage Architects and city administration conducted a feasibility study to determine the future of arenas and aquatic facilities in the City of Lloydminster. Specifically, the future of the Centennial Civic Center. Uh, the Lloydminster Recreation Facilities feasibility study was approved by council at the October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty regular council meeting. Gibbs-Gage Architects recommended that the city prioritize the construction of a new event arena to replace the Centennial Civic Center due to its condition and limited life expectancy. The recommendation, recommended site is on east of the city Saskatchewan site, east of Fortieth Avenue, between Thirty-Sixth Street and Forty-First Street, directly south of the casino. Site was selected for the recommendation and validation based on discussion with council. Recommendation and public feedback from the feasibility study and internal site prioritization. A request for proposal package was issued on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to procure the architectural services consultant to create a detailed design of a new event arena and form a site validation of the east end location. Uh, the package was issued and posted on city's bid and tender website. The val, evaluation criteria and associated weighted identified within the RFP is summarized, uh, in the table that you see before you. The proposed period closed on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Nine bids were received and evaluated. The vendors, their proposal amounts excluding GST and total scores are summarized in the following table. Again, it's on the, on for you. The score above provided the evaluation team with the top three vendors that were shortlisted and invited to participate in interview process. The interview process was conducted by the evaluation team to further refine the scores and evaluation weighting. The top three vendors, their proposal amounts excluding GST, and the total adjusted scores are summarized in the following table. Again, I'll, I won't go through the table. Administration has recommended that TBD Architect and Urban Planning be awarded the project due to having the highest overall score following the interview process. Through the RFP submission and interview process, TBD displayed a high level of experience and expertise in large event arena projects, bring forward a well-rounded and highly qualified team. Their unique value-added operational planning tools and capital investment trackers will help to balance the city's need during the design of the project. TBD has a strong focus on operations, is forward-thinking regarding the chosen site and future development of the area. Uh, options, uh, option one, that council award the contract for the new event arena detailed design architect services to TBD Architecture and Urban Planning in the amount of one million, four hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty dollars plus GST, and a ten percent contingency of a hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-five plus GST, to be funded from the capital project, number two zero seven four zero zero eight, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. Additionally, that council approve one million, twenty-seven thousand dollars and eighty-five dollars in the twenty-twenty-two capital plan to allocate to capital project two zero seven four zero zero eight. Uh, number two is not to approve the award, and number three, of course, is to bring back additional awards. Uh, this, uh, project is aligned, uh, managing our environment and infrastructure design. Planning and instruction of a new arena promotes access to function. Planning and instruction of a new arena promotes access to functional public facilities. Budget and financial application, there's 600,000 has been budgeted in the 2021 capital plan for initiation and procure for an architectural service consultant. There's a table there for you guys to look at regarding how the rest goes. Any questions?
Thanks, Joel. Counselor Torson.
Thank you, worship. I've got a handful of questions, but I'll ask first the one I know that you know is coming. So you did pick the top three to do interviews, so with how close the scoring was, why didn't we, why did we not interview the fourth? Just, and I get that we're not talking about big money in terms of a gap, they were all right in the same ballpark, but I'm just curious with AODBT, why, if they were at 85 at that stage, why they didn't have an, an interview process? And assuming that the interview was always a part of the process that you were planning on following with the RFP.
Thank you for your, your question, Counselor Torson. I believe, and I'll just double check in the paperwork, but I believe in the RFP package, we stated that we would only be interviewing the top three. So we were following the process of the tender. We did discuss it because the pricing or the scoring was so close, but we determined that the top three were excellent candidates and we felt comfortable that one of them would be a good choice.
Yeah, fair enough. And I, I can understand that, sure, like I'm, I'm okay with that. It's just because of the, the nature of it where they're, you know, within a very close percentage of each other from the overall score. The other questions I had, well, this is more of a comment, TBD, it sounds like they haven't finished setting the company up yet. But I'm sure they're great, you know, to be determined. But anyway, the last question that's actually a question here is just on the fee. I, I understand why we have it, you know, the budget, the way that it is in terms of future year's budget we would be allocating because we don't expect to get far enough into the phases of the project to actually have the entire spend. So really you're allocating future monies towards it and I'm okay with that. Makes perfect sense. The question I don't know or understand is in terms of project scope. Because, you know, generally there's scope specified that you are going to design up to this level of granularity or whatever it is. And generally speaking, architects from my experience are on a percentage of overall project cost. So will there be additional costs for architecture-related fees outside of this and the contingency if it ends up being, you know, a more expensive facility? Just generally speaking, the 5% or 8% is your cost of your architectural services that includes your sub-engineers and things like that. So any idea whether or not the scope is nailed down or whether or not we could be looking at a significant scope change in the future? If it's a much different building that we maybe we had included at this stage?
We used the feasibility study to help flush out this RFP and so we were very exact at, of what kind of arena we heard the community already wanted. And so I believe with that model that these fees should be accurate.
If I can just add to that, we, in the, through the RFP, we included the requirement to design for two arenas. Whether we build two at the same time is yet to be determined, but that's within the scope of this, this RFD. So, so the two arena design is fully included in the price before you.
And, and just a, a comment on that, I think that's actually an incredibly prudent thing to do, especially with the feasibility studies and some of the conceptual things we've seen so far and how much more cost-effective it is to add a second ice surface to an ice plant. Makes perfect sense that you would do that and you would do it at this stage so that, you know, your final site plan doesn't include something that you would have to tear down or would have significant costs later on. So leave a blank piece of gra, patch of grass next to it where there could be a, where there could be a rink surface at some point. So, no, I understand and I get it. I think that, you know, the best, the best architect wins, whether they're to be determined or not. Which is our name. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor, Counselor Dychuk.
Thanks, worship. A couple of things. One is that I went and looked at both TBD, TBT and ACI Architects, ACI Architects, pardon me, looked at the websites and ACI has a lot of schools, fire halls, building hubs and other kind of buildings along that vein as, as, you know, their features when they've advertised. And certainly when you look at TBD, you see Rogers Place kind of part of the, the front page and their experience and when you read their resumes, obviously there's, there's a stronger focus around that recreation component of it. The one thing that I didn't see and I guess is a question mark is that as, as we live through the 30-plus degree temperatures and, and the thought of climate change in the back of our heads, do either of these architect firms or, or does TBT, and I didn't see that in there and I suspect it might be there, but to what degree are they bringing any environmental or, or energy-saving sort of pieces to the table at this point? Because arenas are expensive, they lose money, they, you heat them up, you cool them down and you're constantly dealing with this exchange of heat and it costs money. Is, is there anything in their package that was in there that suggests they would be the best one because of some of those pieces?
Absolutely. Through the interview, we had a really good discussion with TBD about how we can make an arena more green, how we can in-check some of that stuff and, and they had some really great thoughts and some really cool things that they've already done in other sites. So that is something that we've discussed and something that we will look into as we move forward.
Yeah, and again, I just, I, I think it's important to, to, for us to start looking at those because when we look at the cost side and we just look, went through our budget, I mean, we know that arenas cost money and I think that any efforts we can make to actually save some of those dollars. And, and the reason I raise, raise the second part to it is that we worked with AODBT to build College Park School and, you know, they're, they're very much into supporting the green and I think the school might have been built to the silver standard. But when we looked at the cost and the, the value for the investment, it wasn't always there. So we used the black wall, we used a whole bunch of other pieces in, in terms of construction of the building that was going to be qualify you and even bicycle stands qualify you for, you know, getting this, this, this standard of achievement because it's part of trying to get, you know, environmentally focused practices and so on and so forth. But the, the real money is in terms of that design and it can make a difference. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that piece of it, certainly as part of the project.
Just to add on to my answer there, Executive Manager, just remind me, TBD actually had a sustainability lead as part of their sub-consultant team, so that's one thing that they have.
Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I wouldn't be me if I didn't ask the next obvious question. Justify me 50,000, that's my question. We didn't take the lowest bid on this and the score is within 0.4 of a percent. So, and you look at the initial score versus the, the adjusted score after the fact, it obviously was the interview that pushed the other guys over that, but we're still 50,000 or so higher than the next lowest tender for 0.4 of a percent.
Yeah, TBD's interview was extremely good. They have a really good knowledge of our project and they showcased how good of knowledge they had as well as their past experience. They also have some pretty cool value-added consultants. The Sustainable Lead is, is one that we saw with them, but also on others. Some others they had, or they had a accessibility consultant, which I don't believe any other team had that. They had a acoustic, uh, sub-consultant as well. They also had a ice consultant, which is something we've seen refrigeration consultants, but not a, a, an understanding of how they make ice and the fellow they bring in is very high, touted as one of the top ice makers. So they had some really interesting consultants that they made us a little bit more aware of through the interview, I think. Executive Manager Simpson may have a few more.
I'd also add that they have an operational consultant, so someone who can work with our team to make sure that the design meets the needs of our programming that we see in the future and that we're, we're making conscious choices of our design elements to get the best operational efficiencies and that's a value add that we felt was, was worthy of the higher price. So the day we're opening, we have a really good understanding of how to program the facility to be most cost-effective.
Yeah, so when you, when you put it that way, you're investing that a little bit more upfront that'll pay itself back in no time flat and, and you feel way more confident in their abilities and the people that they're tapping to help us get the product that the community deserves and the community expects at the end of the day. So, you know, we trust your judgment on that stuff and I think it was just good to have that discussion about that, to say why the difference in that. And those things to me sound very reasonable, so thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Whitey.
Yeah, thank you, worship. This looks good. I looked, I too went online, checked out a couple of different architectural firms there. Looks, you know, this, I think the one you have chosen does meet what we're aiming for in a facility in, in our, in our community. I have to go back to location and then thus the environment, environment assessment that I assume is to, you know, kind of do some tests, check out the, the groundwork, that sort of stuff to ensure that that space that is earmarked for the arena is, is good for arena and this type of facility, is that correct in that?
That's correct. So that's one of the big next steps to confirm a site is to do more detailed environmental assessments. We have some preliminary ones that look okay for now and so this will give us more detail on, on what kind of construction we can do on that site and it'll really give us an idea of if there's extra costs related to soil issues and that will help factor into our site selection.
Gotcha. So just to be clear, because I'm, 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 I've given, I've been given all the good points of this area that fits this type of facility, the hotels, the, the access and that sort of stuff. I still have thoughts on that and, and, you know, are somewhat on the fence as to where this, if this is the best space. But looking forward to what comes out of the environmental assessment from this and, but just to be clear, it hasn't been written in stone that this is the space. We're not announcing that this is where the arena is going. This is just a starting point for the future of the arena. In the meantime, the architecture still has the opportunity to start planning and designing without specific. They don't need a space, I would assume, in order to start somewhat of the design. Is it, can I say that?
That's probably accurate. You don't need, you don't need the site. I mean, it's obviously more helpful if you have the site to design, so we're going to be doing those things in tandem, the environmental assess, assessment and the preliminary designs. Once we get more detail on the site, we'll come back to council and ultimately it'll be your decision where the, where the arena goes. So that decision will come forward for approval in a formal capacity and then more detailed design, especially around the site and access and those kind of things can be done, but a lot of the internal design work can, can start concurrently with the assessment.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that piece that's in there. The other, the railroad track that's on the backside, on the east side of this property, it, it butts up to the east side of this property, right? And that was just something that I questioned if, because we aren't going to have access from the east to a, to a larger property and.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. The quarter section that this is on, on the east property line of that is three-year-old that runs north-south. I believe it's CP, CP rail.
And that was the other, thinking about this place and we talk about access to it and we do have one, one, one side of it that wouldn't have any access from, from that direction. And that was just another piece that I was wanting to bring up and ensure that that was thought of. I'll continue to leave it up to you to, to make the best call.
Any other comments from council, questions?
Certainly I appreciate the work that went into it from administration and the, you know, creating the proposal or request for a proposal, but the interview stage isn't digging into those questions because I think it's, it's been brought up. We certainly know the environment is an issue, it's part of government grants these days, so we're certainly, I, excuse me, I appreciate that that's been taken into account already because that's going to play a huge role in moving forward when, if and when council decides to do that from that perspective, because if we're not going to access federal funding because we didn't make it green enough, as the term is referred to, I think that's important that that's been considered and it's great that you've looked at the other options and pieces because we, building a facility is one thing, operating is another and you folks do that every day and you know your budgets well. And I appreciate that you've also brought in expertise from that perspective because this will be a new facility. Things have changed since Civic Center was built, even from when the Service Sports Center was built. So being as current as we can be and being as advanced as we can be is what we want to present to the community because they're looking for a building that's going to stand up 60, 70-plus years. The Civic Center has served us well. The challenge is that, it's like everything, it doesn't stay with us forever, I'm afraid, so from that perspective. So I appreciate the work that you've done and justifying why you've brought forward that proposal for slightly more money, but seeing the value added and I think thanks to Counselor Buckingham's question because I think that's the question we're going to be asked. Why did you go with a little bit more money? Because we saw the value, administration saw the value. And I think that's, that's very, very important because we have that ability. If it was cut and dried and said it had to be the lowest price, but in this case, if the value is there, I think it's beneficial to the community for today and the long haul. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'll look for direction from council on 8.4.1. Counselor Torson, did you, was that?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I, I was just going to say generally first that these types of things, especially when you're, you're talking about the price variance of how small it is, but if, if you get the best possible consultant that's the most expert in these things, that $40,000 could save you $4 million. Like when you look at the grand scheme of these things, so, yeah. That, that's why, that's why normally in our purchasing policy, we're looking primarily at all those other things. The financing is the smaller part from all of our other purchasing options, like when we buy goods. 35% is about as low as we go, if I understand. So, you know, the other 65 is really what makes the big difference in the proj, project overall. But generally, to read this now, like I said, I would. Finding it? All right. I move that council award the contract for the new event arena detailed design architect services to TBD Architecture plus Urban Planning in the amount of $1,447,350 plus GST and a 10% contingency of $144,735 plus GST to be funded from capital project number 2074008 and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next is an additional.
Sorry, you can keep going.
Okay, additionally, that council approve $1,027,085 in the 2022 capital plan to be allocated to capital project number 2074008.
Thank you, Counselor. Secondary, I've got Counselor Buckingham, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the question? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Joel. Moving on to 8.4.2, City Manager.
Thank you, worship, for 8.4.2 Bud Miller Park Revitalization Project Approval. I will ask Executive Manager Tracy Simpson to present.
Executive Manager Simpson.
So earlier this year on June, June 23, 2021, the Government of Canada announced the Canada Community Revitalization Fund. This fund aims to help communities across Canada build and improve community infrastructure projects so they can rebound from the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. With a national investment of $500 million over two years, the fund proposed is to support eligible projects to build new community infrastructure and revitalize existing assets, bring people back to public spaces safely as health measures ease and to create jobs and stimulate local economies. Projects that could be included for funding include the adoption or construction of community spaces such as downtown cores, main streets, farmers markets, community centers, cultural centers, parks, community gardens, recreational trails and facilities. Projects can receive up to 75% of total project cost to a maximum of $750,000 and must be complete by March 31 of 2023. Priority will be given to projects that are shovel-ready, that leverage other funding support and partnerships. Projects that request under $500,000 demonstrate measurable direct and indirect social economic benefits and improve or reinvent outdoor spaces. Currently, the program is running a scheduled and continuous intake. The scheduled intake deadline is July 23, 2021. Applications received by this date will be prioritized and then the remaining funds after the scheduled intake period will get continued to be assessed and funded on a continuous basis over two years until all the funds are allocated. Eligible applicants may submit multiple applications if they wish. The Bud Miller Park Revitalization Program has been determined to have the highest likelihood of success in securing funds. Project activities include the renovating of the PSM Park Center, upgrading the surrounding walking trails and installing a sun shade by the spray park. Together, these activities will revitalize the area, area, encouraging greater community participation and support social cohesiveness, cohesion, community vitality and quality of life. As our largest park and multi-use recreation area, Bud Miller Park is essential to restoring community well-being and the project activities were chosen with that in mind. community well-being and the project activities were chosen with that in mind. So today, we're looking for council to approve, administration to proceed with the Bud Miller Park Revitalization Project and approve the City of Lloydminster's contribution in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars pending grant approval. This project, uh, is in alignment with the strategic plan in managing our environment and infrastructure. And the council motion is required to support the grant submission. If successful with the project, the city would be required to contribute the two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to matching funds for the project. And council has already approved thirty thousand dollars in the 2021 capital project for the park center internal upgrade design. And we'll open for any questions, Your Worship.
Thank you very, very much, Executive Manager Simpson. Questions? Comments? Counselor Whiting?
Yeah, thank you. And as with all the grants, I assume that, you know, this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is only, is only if we get the seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so there's amount of projects that you have determined that maybe if, if we don't get the grant, then some of them would still go ahead but budgeted for those pieces, but not the whole thing, I would assume. Is that correct in saying?
That'd be correct, Counselor Whiting. We would, we would, if we were unsuccessful with the grant, some of those projects would still be, um, looked at in the 2022 budget, maybe not as a package project. And we would prioritize those along with other projects for funding.
Yeah, good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, good. Counselor Merron, then Counselor Torson.
It was a race.
It was.
Yeah. So, uh, thank you, Your Worship. So I, I was looking to, I was thinking about, you know, what are those specifics around, you know, the, the walkways and, and the revitalization projects? So is that identified in one of our documents of, and, and do you have a list of what that would look like? You don't need to give me the list today. I'm just kind of curious about that.
My understanding, Counselor Merron, is that we do have prioritization of pathways in Bud Miller. And I'm assuming we could be, provide that to you if needed.
So there's a, there's a document around the parks. And so I'm just thinking, are we following some of the reports that we've already had done? And, and, um...
I'm just going to get a little assistance on that answer.
Just going to get the attention here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if I could just add, I know that the, the section along the southern part of the lake, Bud Miller Park Lake Pond, that section of sidewalk, I know was when Blake did his presentation, that was the area that was going to be addressed in, in this summer's project.
Right, coming from the amphitheater and around, um, the south side of the lake, or?
Uh, no, just the south side.
Just the south side?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's, it's on a, it's on a bit of a slant. And what you see is that the water will go underneath it. Then it breaks, there's a break in, in the, the pavement. So the tractor, the walking path is kind of just cracked. So there's, I, I don't know whether drainage is going to be addressed, whatever. But my understanding is that, that section on the south side is what Blake had shared with us. And correct me if I'm wrong, I guess.
Executive Manager Stane.
Yeah, sorry. I apologize. I was reading the email. Um, the trail assessment will be done under two portions. So within the Trails Master Plan, they'll be looking at future trails, uh, how they're, how they're built currently within the plan. And then there's a Condition Assessment Plan being done, uh, in conjunction with the sidewalk survey assessment. The trails surveys will be assessed there and priorities will be developed from that report as well.
Thank you. So I'm certainly in support of this. I think anytime we can access matching dollars, or in this case, more than matching dollars, we should take advantage of that. And, uh, you know, spending some time in Bud Miller, I recognize the, the many benefits that, um, the community would receive from having this work done. So I just was curious about, you know, have we already done that work to identify what specifically needs to be done? Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Counselor Torson?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, the one item I was just curious about, and, and I'm assuming it is possible because that's the way we, we've got it here, is we can have many small projects included in this as an overall big project. Ju- just because, you know, either the confusion would be is, oh, why can't you include, uh, you know, something related to the pool because it's still technically within Bud Miller Park? Or can you, you know, do a whole bunch of stuff like that to make up your million dollars? Which, trust me, I, I know from doing this for a few years, it's easy to spend a million dollars on some of these projects. So, uh, but yeah, that would be a question.
Yeah, Counselor Torson, we looked at all the projects and priorities in the park area and determined that these were kind of the best fit for the, for the grant. Um, there were a couple at the BioClean Aquatic Center that we didn't feel really hit, hit their priority list that may not have been the top of, uh, top of funding priority. So we didn't include them.
Okay.
For that reason.
Okay. Uh, no, that's, that's great. And yeah, I, I just agree generally with the statement, um, anytime we can access federal or provincial dollars, uh, individuals pay property taxes, or sorry, individuals pay personal and corporate taxes a tremendous amount, uh, more than you'll ever pay in property taxes in your lifetime. And to get some of those funds directed directly back to our community is always good if we can make it happen. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I will look for direction from council on eight point four point two, the Bud Miller Park Revitalization Project Approval. Counselor Dychuk.
Thanks, Your Worship. Move that council approve administration to proceed with the Bud Miller Park Revitalization Project and approve the City of Lloydminster contribution in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars pending grant approval.
Thank you. Secondary, Counselor Merron, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. I would entertain a motion for a short recess to three thirty. Counselor Dychuk, seconded by Counselor Whiting. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. We are recessed.
Moving on to the agenda, moving on to item number nine, bylaws. I'll look to City Manager.
Thank you, Your Worship, for nine point one, bylaw number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one, text amendment to L U B number five dash twenty sixteen, home-based businesses and enforcement. I'll ask Caitlin Lester to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship, and members of council.
Good afternoon, Caitlin.
The recommendation is that council grant first reading to bylaw number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one, text amendment to the land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, home-based businesses and enforcement, and that council establish a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at two P M. This amendment was initiated by administration to address current issues and challenges regarding home-based businesses and to add a home-based business limited category, which was part of the business license lien project recommendations. The review process included examining the home-based business section of thirteen Alberta municipalities and three Saskatchewan municipalities of varying sizes. The review compared the current home-based business section in the land use bylaw five dash twenty sixteen and the potential changes that could be implemented. Once this was established, city administration conducted a review of the potential changes to land use bylaw five dash twenty sixteen to determine the most appropriate changes to be included in the proposed amendment, along with addressing enforcement as required of home-based businesses. It should also be noticed noted that discussions were completed regarding enforcement with legislative services, public safety, and the city solicitors. The home-based business section amendments include but are not limited to adding a home-based business limited category for home offices, which does not require a development permit; adding that a home-based business in an apartment-style dwelling must not be a home-based business major and must not allow client visits at the residence; adding that for a home-based business minor or major in a cul-de-sac, a parking sign is required to direct clients to the use of the provided off-street parking; changing client visits for home-based business major from two or more per day to two to five per day and no more than twenty-five in a seven-day period; and a permit approval card for home-based business minor or major must be placed in a window visible from the street. To address enforcement concerns, administration is proposing to amend land use bylaw five dash twenty sixteen by adding a definition for bylaw enforcement officer, adding subsection two point three bylaw enforcement officer, which outlines what tasks they may perform under section two Development Authority Applications and Amendments, and adding subsection three point one enforcement, specific to enforcement powers, to section three Controvention and Enforcement. As part of the bylaw amendment process, newspaper ads in the June tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one additions of the Meridian Source informed the public of the amendment, and referrals were sent to internal departments and external agencies with twenty-one days ending July first to provide comment. Internal and external comments showed no concerns, and no comments were received from the public. Should first reading be granted, a public hearing will be held prior to second and third readings. I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. Questions, comments? Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for that. So what happens to existing? Is there a grandfathered into this portion or no? Because if there is, administration will be familiar with one of these things that keeps coming back into my inbox regarding this type of stuff. Would the biz-- is there a grandfather clause, or do the businesses have to now adapt to this new bylaw?
No, this would be going forward from now on, or from when this is passed on.
So it doesn't really address the concerns now?
There are elements that would. So for instance, any of the enforcement measures would still be in place, but how do I describe this? It's more so for the approval, any of these regulations. So for instance, on the questionnaire, it does ask you questions that are related to these policies. So that would be grandfathered in, in the sense that there's not a new application. They're not going through that process again. So anything that would have changed in that would change. But enforcement would, going forward, would still be an option. So they could still have, still could be ticketed if they're not following the conditions that they had.
Yeah, because I was, I was excited to see this come forward as an option, thinking it might handle a couple of the concerns that had been put our way numerous times.
They will still be able to be ticketed, and that will help with some of these concerns, especially parking.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Good question, Counselor. I had the very same question in my mind. So Counselor Torson.
Thank you, Your Worship. There was one section that I picked up on when we saw this this time around that I didn't note before, which is five dash, or five point seventeen point sixteen, which, which is the not permitted uses as home-based businesses. Just try to be clear on the wording of the sentence at the top, because to me, the items listed would be pretty clear that they would not be permitted for home-based use. But it says, "Uses that are not permitted as home-based businesses at the discretion of the development officer include but are not limited to." So does that mean at the discretion of the development officer, they may be permitted?
It does not, but I see where you're coming from with that wording. I think what the point of that wording was to show that this is not everything. Yes. But, which is already said from included but not limited to, so that could be changed.
Yeah.
If you feel that is confusing.
Perfect. Yeah, just, just because, to me, it seemed like if the development officer was okay, you could have adult entertainment facilities within a home-based business, which to me, I guess we were pretty good with our recruiting and everything, but you never know, maybe someone would allow that one day. So I don't want to leave the option open.
That can absolutely be done. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Whitey?
Thank you. There was one that popped up this time around as well, too, and it deals with the garages. And it says that, so it's five point seventeen point eleven. A home-based business may be, may be accommodated in a private garage, however, provided, however, does not prevent the continued use of garage for the intended purpose of parking motor vehicles. And that reflects how, you know, there is issues with parking when it comes to home-based businesses. However, I, you know, there's, there's tons of man caves, there's tons of workshops and all that sort of stuff in garages, and garages around town have been converted to anything but parking stalls for vehicles. And in this scenario that, you know, you know, across the road, you might have somebody that's, you know, has a whole workshop. He's just making stuff, and he's not a home-based business, and he can have, you know, zero parking in his garage. But in this case, is it saying that then somebody that does have a workshop that is making money off of those projects inside the garage cannot have that garage filled with, you know, a couple different devices or things to accommodate their home-based business? Is that correct?
So when you intensify the use, you are upheld to different requirements, of course. For a normal residential use, you would be required two hard surface parking spots, which, when you have a garage, could be the garage or the driveway. So if you have a home-based business in addition to that, especially a major, you would be required to have two additional hard surface spots. So that would be the garage and the driveway. So in that case, if you were to take up part of the garage, you would not fulfill your required parking?
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay. And in the case where you have two spots in front of a garage, you're safe?
As long as that's, it has to be in addition to what's required to the dwelling now.
Okay.
So that they aren't reusing those two spots for the dwelling and the business. Now they have to have separate. Is that clear?
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted to clarify that one and, and some of the perception that I had of reading that versus what's out there. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Merrick?
Thank you, Your Worship. So this has been playing in my mind, and I'm just going to ask it, but I think I know the answer. This would not apply to people who are working for another organization but required now to have a home-based office?
That is a very good question, and I can get a better answer for you next time.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Caitlin, you did mention that it had gone out for public input already, and there was no, no comments received at this point. But I'm sure once it makes the news, it'll, it might spring a little more discussion, because we continue to see, I think, an increase in number of home-based businesses, which is understandable, as people are trying to transition from, from one career to another potentially, or supporting their income however they can from a business perspective. But I think it's important to remind people that it's great starting in garages and starting in your basement, but at the same token, your neighbors also have a right to use certain things. And that's the discussion I think Counselor Buckingham, we've all heard about from various neighbors that are concerned about home-based businesses. So it's trying to find a happy medium to accommodate the growth and start those and hope that they end up in a retail space either downtown or throughout our city. So I think it's important that we continue to address home-based businesses, and they play an important part in our community. Counselor Dachshund.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify and make sure I heard what I heard is, was accurate, I guess. So I guess is, is as we look at this trend where more and more, you know, businesses are saying, we'd love you to work from home. If you're sitting at home when you have a bedroom and you convert it to an office, but you don't have anybody coming in, and all you're doing is sitting in there and working, this wouldn't even apply to them, would it?
I don't want to lead anyone astray. I don't believe so, but I will confirm. We do now have that home office category, so that is more so for people that, that's, would be associated with their business license, right? So they won't have a development permit that's more so for their business, but I will confirm that.
Yeah, and I guess the part I'm thinking about is that now through, I, I mean, the federal government was saying that you would claim, was it two dollars a day or four dollars a day if you were told to work from home? And so I guess as I look at this, it's actually a little messier, and I thought it was as you're asking the question, so.
Yes.
Counselor Torson.
Thank you, Your Worship. And this just could be the alignment of the tables and maybe the way I'm reading it. But on, on the table, on, for five point seventeen point seventeen in X one, that would be eleven, signage and visibility. It does say there can be one non-illuminated fascia sign, no larger. Is that a maximum or a minimum?
That is a maximum.
Okay, a maximum of one sign. Okay. I just want to make sure that it didn't, it's not a mandatory sign, whereas in other commercial properties, having a sign is more mandatory in nature. Okay. No, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I will look for direction on nine point one bylaw number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one, text amendment to land use bylaw number five twenty sixteen, home-based businesses and enforcement. Counselor Dachshund.
Thanks, Worship. Move that council grant first reading to bylaw number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one, text amendment to land use bylaw number five dash twenty sixteen, home-based businesses and enforcement, and that council establish a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on April, pardon me, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at two P M.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Whitey. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any? I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Caitlin. Moving on to nine point two, City Manager.
Thank you, Worship, for nine point two, bylaw number twenty-four dash twenty twenty-one, permanent road closure application, seventy-second Avenue. I'll ask, I will ask Anthony Andre to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of council.
Good afternoon, Anthony.
The recommendation is that council grant first reading to bylaw number twenty-four dash twenty twenty-one, being a bylaw to close all that portion of seventy-two Avenue, as shown as Area A and Area B on Plan number two twelve, as amended by land titles attached to Schedule A, and the council establish a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at two P M. Nautical Lands Group recently purchased approximately six point three five hectares of land within the Parkview Estates neighborhood for the construction of approximately two hundred rowhouse dwelling units. The development replaces initial plans to subdivide approximately seventy-seven lots intended for low-density residential. Nautical Land Group has expressed interest in purchasing the two portions of right-of-way included in the closure, which should have initially been needed for public roadway accessing the lots. The rowhouse development will instead utilize private roadways. Buildings may not be constructed within six meters of the front sightline. By removing the intersections, the site is less impeded. Should the right-of-way be closed, the lands will be sold and consolidated with the adjacent property. Purchase pricing and the land sale will be coordinated by Land Division. A twenty-one-day referral period ended June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, which listed comments, concerns, and questions from internal departments, external agencies, and adjacent property owners. A public referral was also included in the June tenth and June seventeenth additions of the Meridian Source. While no objections were received, several utility companies requested easements within the closure area to protect existing infrastructure. These requests will be managed accordingly. Should first reading be granted, notice of the public hearing will be given as, as per Part Seven of the Lloydminster Charter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Counselor Whitey?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. This is one that I, I know I brought this up a couple times before, but I feel like this is one that could easily be done in a second and third reading of the unanimous consent. I know that this section of land has already been approved and moving forward with the appropriate approvals from council, and this really is just a piece that falls in after the fact, and it doesn't change anything about that land approval or, or that sale. And I'd, I think we'd have to readjust some of the wording in here, but that's something that I think that this would help with some of the red tape production and get this going faster.
I'll look to the city clerk, please.
Unfortunately, in this case, this isn't one that you could do three readings in one sitting, because you do require a public hearing. So you have to hold a public hearing. So had we held the public hearing prior to the, to the first reading, then you could. But you need the first reading in order to hold the public hearing.
This one does need a public hearing for?
This one does require a public hearing. It's amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay.
Thanks, Counselor. It was a good chase on that one. Counselor Buckingham.
I'd make the motion if you're willing to entertain it.
I would willing to entertain that motion.
Thank you. I move that council grant first reading the bylaw number twenty-four dash twenty twenty-one, being a bylaw to close all that portion of seventy-second Avenue, shown as Area A and Area B on Plan two one two, as amended by land titles in the southwest quarter, Section thirty-five, forty-nine, one, west of the fourth, as shown on the map attached to Schedule A, and the council establish a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at two P M.
Thank you, Counselor. Looking for a secondar, Counselor Whitey. Thank you very much. The only question I have for administration is, we're absolutely clear, it's just Plan two one two. I noticed there's a little dash gap, and I just wasn't sure if we'd missed a number and didn't make it.
No. So the reason for that is because we're closing just a portion of the road right-of-way. The bylaw requires a plan of survey drafted by a, a land surveyor. So that's what's attached to the bylaw, and the, the plan of survey will be provided or given a full plan number once it's approved and given to land titles. So that's the reason for the dash.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to have it come back just because we might have missed something there. Thank you very much, Anthony. Any other questions before I call for the question? Not seeing any? I'll, I'll call for it. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Anthony.
Thank you.
Moving on to nine point three, City Manager.
Thank you, Worship, for by, our number, nine point three, bylaw number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, the wastewater bylaw. I will ask Karen De La Rosa to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and council.
Good afternoon, Karen.
So I'm here to present bylaw fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, a wastewater bylaw, with the recommendation that council grant first reading to bylaw fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, a wastewater bylaw. During the June fourteenth council meeting, administration reported that the current sewer use bylaw does not provide sufficient authority or the required mechanisms to enforce a pollution prevention program. The new bylaw is being brought forward to improve implementation and enforcement while maintaining focus on educating businesses and the public on pollution prevention. The proposed amendment includes implementation of code of practice, implementation of discharge permitting, implementation of fines associated with inspection findings, authority to discontinue provision of services, and authority to require a monitoring access point at sanitary service. Similar to the current bylaw, the wastewater bylaw will maintain focus on public education and engagement through more frequent facility visits and inspections. Industry-specific codes of practice will also be implemented to help businesses comply with the bylaw. Discharge permitting would be implemented to enhance the city's ability to monitor discharges into our system and the inclusion of enhanced enforcement capabilities when enabled the city to require actionable items and encourage compliance regardless of available infrastructure for discharge tapping. Since the presentation at the June fourteenth GPC meeting, administration has also included the following changes based on council's feedback. So the name was revised to wastewater bylaw, and the fines were increased to further discourage contravention of the bylaw. We've also confirmed that provisions are in place within the amendment, the amended bylaw to recover the cost of remediation, cleanup, and other items associated with a spill. This item is in alignment with a strategic area of managing our environment and infrastructure. The new wastewater bylaw will help further mitigate risk to the new wastewater treatment plant facility and the treatment process. It's also expected to mitigate risk of non-compliance regulatory requirements and the risk of significant costs associated with cleanup and receding the new wastewater treatment facility.
Thank you, Karen. Questions or comments? Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. Thanks, Karen. I may be diving into the weeds here. I just, in my own neighborhood, I know that I have some, some folks that are very fond of hunting and things like that. So I know that they've brought animals to town, and they've butchered their, you know, or dressed these animals at their houses. So under four point two in the Schedule F of the penalties, there's discharging into collection system wastewater-containing animal waste and stuff. I don't know where we're at on the, from a city perspective on what our, our ruling is on that kind of thing in the city, and it happens a lot. Does that fall under that?
We would have to assess that, Counselor Buckingham, so are we talking about like those types of?
Yeah, because they're going to wash, I've seen it washed down driveways and so on, so forth. So I assume that that would fall under this offense bylaw.
Yeah, we would have to look into that in terms of severity and also in terms of risks. We definitely don't want to add additional processes in, into the system. However, we also want to ensure that we're protecting our system and we're protecting our treatment process. So we're going to have to evaluate that based on severity and risk. The intent of, of that clause of the bylaw is more on slaughterhouses, those types of operations where there's a significant amount of volume of blood that goes into the system.
I assumed, I assumed as much, but at the same time, I wanted to make sure that those that are avid hunters and things like that don't end up getting some kind of surprise in there or didn't know about it. So I just, it's one that caught my attention anyways.
Sure. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any? Not seeing any. I will entertain the, someone to, for Counsel's direction on 9.3, the bylaw Number 15-2021, wastewater bylaw. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. Before I do that, were you able to bring me some information or bring us back some information on that, if that would fall into that between now and the next time we see this?
Yeah, I could definitely do that, Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you. I make the motion that Counsel grant first reading to Bylaw Number 15-2021, the wastewater bylaw.
Thank you. Seconder, Counsel Fagin. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
Moving on to 9.4, City Manager.
Thank you, Worship, for 9.4, Bylaw Number 21-2021, 57th Street Permanent Road Closure. I will ask Anthony Andre to once again come up and present.
Good afternoon.
Welcome back, Anthony.
The recommendation is that Counsel grant second and third readings to Bylaw Number 21-2021, being a bylaw to close all that portion of 57th Street, as shown on the attached sketch as Schedule A. Counsel approved the sale and subdivision of approximately 20.67 hectares of land to the Lloydminster Agricultural Exhibition Association during the September 24th, 2018 regular council meeting. Land Division is currently in the process of subdividing the lands to complete the sale, which includes a portion of the legal road right-of-way. A bylaw is required to formally close the road right-of-way included in the sale. No portion of the physical roadway subject to the application has been constructed. Much of the right-of-way continues to be utilized by the Exhibition Association, while a portion is currently occupied by the Lloydminster Cemetery. Should the closure be approved, approximately 1 hectare of the right-of-way will be sold, while the remaining, most eastern .69 hectares will remain. The application to permanently close the road is consistent with the development concept of the Northeast Area Structure Plan, as well as the Lloydminster Cemetery Master Plan. A 21-day referral period soliciting comments and concerns from internal departments, external agencies, and adjacent landowners ended July 8th. A public notice was also included in the June 10th and June 17th, 2021 additions of the Meridian Source. No objections were received during the referral period. However, several utility companies requested easements to protect their interests, which will be managed accordingly. The public hearing held July 19th, 2021, was advertised in the June 24th, July 1st, and July 8th additions of the Meridian Source. No changes have been made to the bylaw since first reading was given June 21st, 2021. Should the bylaw receive second and third readings, a request for consent will be submitted to the Ministry of Highways and Infrastructure of Saskatchewan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any. I will entertain a motion for 9.4, excuse me, Bylaw Number 21-2021, 57th Street Permanent Road Closure. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship. I move that Counsel grant second reading to Bylaw Number 21-2021, being a bylaw to close all that portion of 57th Street, Plan Number BA3882 in the southwest quarter section 115028 west of the third, and the northwest quarter section of 25028 west of the third, as shown on the sketch attached as Schedule A.
Thank you. I'll look for a seconder. Counsel Whitey, thank you very much. Any further discussion to the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counsel, if you would please.
Thank you, Worship. I move that Counsel grant third and final reading to Bylaw Number 21-2021, being a bylaw to close all that portion of 57th Street, Plan Number BA3882 in the southwest quarter of 115028 west of the third, and the northwest quarter 25028 west of the third, as shown on the sketch attached as Schedule A.
Thank you very much. Seconder, Counsel Torson, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Anthony.
Thank you.
Moving on to 9.5, City Manager.
Thank you, Worship, for 9.5, Bylaw Number 20-2021, text amendment to LUB, or Bylaw Number 5-2016, warehouse sales in the I-2 district. I will ask Caitlin Lester to come present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of Council.
Welcome back, Caitlin.
The recommendation is that Counsel grant second and third reading to Bylaw Number 20-2021, text amendment to Land Use Bylaw Number 5-2016, warehouse sales in the I-2 district. The City of Lloydminster received a text amendment application requesting that warehouse sales be included as a permitted use in the I-2 district. The applicant is in the process of purchasing an existing building located in this district. The purpose of the I-2 district, as described in the Land Use Bylaw 5-2016, is to provide for industrial uses that carry out a portion of their operations outdoors or require outdoor storage areas, and any nuisance associated with these uses should not extend beyond the boundaries of the site. The I-2 district presently includes permitted uses such as agricultural-oriented sales and services, vehicle and equipment sales and rentals, cannabis sales, and warehousing. Warehouse sales is currently a permitted use in the light industrial I-1 and service commercial C-5 districts, and a discretionary use in the commercial shopping center C-4 district. Administration completed a review of seven comparable municipalities in Alberta and Saskatchewan. Five of those municipalities included warehouse sales or wholesale in the equivalent of the I-2 district. Bylaw Number 20-2021 received first reading during the June 21st, 2021 regular council meeting. The public hearing was advertised in the Meridian Source in the June 24th, July 1st, and July 8th, 2021 additions, and was held during the regular council meeting on July 19th, 2021. Internal comments showed no concern or were in support of the proposed amendment. External comments showed no concerns. No comments were received from the public. I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'll look at Counsel Torson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I move that Counsel grant second reading to Bylaw Number 20-2021, text amendment to Land Use Bylaw Number 5-2016, warehouse sales in the I-2 district.
Thank you. Look for a seconder. Counsel Aaron, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion to the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counsel, if you would please.
I move that Counsel grant third and final reading to Bylaw Number 20-2021, text amendment to Land Use Bylaw Number 5-2016, warehouse sales in the I-2 district.
Thank you very much. Seconder, Counsel Aaron, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the question, on the motion at hand? Not seeing any. I will call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, Mayor and Counsel's Report. My mayor report is attached for the Counsel and our community's review. There's been a variety of virtual meetings until the 11th of July, and with the restrictions being removed in Saskatchewan, gave us the opportunity to get out in the community. And this last week has been really exciting, having the opportunity to partake in the parade for the fair, to attend the NASHA North American Chuck Wagon races, to have a pancake breakfast, and just see the community come alive. And it's really exciting. I just can't say enough good things about what we've seen last week or so. So thank you for Counsel bearing with me while I had other commitments on the 21st council meeting, as well as the GPC meeting on the 12th, but I was able to make it back into my schedule for this meeting. And I will be available in the city, but I am having knee surgery on Wednesday, which will preclude me from being at City Hall for a couple weeks while I get mobility back in my knee and I go from there. But I will still be in town and serving as the mayor, so I won't have to call the deputy mayor too much, I hope. But appreciate he filled in for me, and I'll let him report on that. But it's terrific to be back here, and I hope everybody has a good summer. Remind people that when we come back in August, hopefully renovations will be completed here in the chamber to improve the quality of audio and visual to the community. For those that aren't able to attend meetings on a regular basis, the quality of the recordings and/or the live stream and so forth will be much better. So with that, I'll look to Counsel for any reports. Counsel Fagin.
Yes, I had a great opportunity here Friday to attend the Onion Lake powwow and their grand entrance. So it was really nice to see just a tremendous turnout. It took them over 45 minutes for the dancers to dance in, and there was probably a couple thousand people under their powwow pavilion. So she's getting a little warm in there for sure, but it was, it was a great turnout. And when I, when I left, there was probably about five kilometers of vehicles trying to, still waiting to get in. So it was a nice opportunity to meet Chief Lewis, and I walked with a few of the Counsel members that were on Onion Lake. So yeah, it was a really good experience and nice to see that it was a very great success, at least on Friday night.
Indeed. Thank you very much, Counsel, stepping in as deputy mayor to attend and represent the city for that event. Any other Counsel reports at this time? If not, we'll move on to Item Number 11, any other matters. And I'll present this matter, if I may. This is masking that Counsel would nominate the City of Lloydminster Executive Leadership Team for the Society of Local Government Managers Dedicated Senior Team Award. The issue is the nominations are now open for the Dedicated Senior Team Award for municipalities. From the background, the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association, AUMA, and the Society of Local Government Managers, SLGM, have sponsored an award to recognize a dedicated senior team in a municipality. The Dedicated Senior Municipal Team Award recognizes the outstanding municipal team who has been exemplary in demonstrating service excellence and dedication to municipal government. Criteria for nomination can be community relations, leadership, policy development, financial management, project planning, and long-term strategic planning. Counsel recognizes the dedication that City of Lloydminster Executive Leadership Team has demonstrated in providing improvements within the municipal administration. From enhancements to financial management to completing large capital projects that were overdue within the city, the executive leadership team has provided a strong leadership model and alignment for Counsel's strategic priorities. The options that are being presented is that Counsel nominate the City of Lloydminster Executive Leadership Team, the ELT, for the Society of Local Government Managers Dedicated Seniors Team Award. Option two is not to approve the nomination, and three is to request further information. The alignment with the strategic plan, this item is in alignment with the following strategic area: delivering good governance. Counsel would like to publicly nominate the executive leadership team to recognize their positive advancements in the governance leadership. And with that, I will look for any questions or comments from Counsel. Counsel Torson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Absolutely, you know, when the mayor brought this up, I said right away, for sure I support it. I know about a year ago this time, I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to make another go at running for public office. And at that time, when I didn't believe that I could because of time commitments and things like that, I was comfortable with it, knowing that we had assembled a team that is going to move this city forward for the next 20 years. And even since that time, we have rounded off our team with Executive Manager Simpson, and we have an even more kind of complete project and complete team. The only thing that I would struggle with is, in terms of the criteria for the nomination, is choosing one when the entire team has been phenomenal at all of those items. So trying to figure out whether it's financial management, project planning, long-term strategic planning, you've nailed all of them, in my opinion. So yeah, quite frankly, I think that it suits us and it fits us really well with the team that we've got in front of us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think you did mention that it is going to be a multifaceted application, because I believe, from where I sit, and I'll let some of Counsel speak as well if they wish, that several of those areas, we've hit check marks. And I think that speaks very much. But I'll look to any other comments from Counsel. Counsel Dajak.
Yeah, thanks, Worship. I support this wholeheartedly, and I guess the thing I would put in there is I'm not sure, you know, what the ins and outs are of completing this application, but I'd be certainly willing to volunteer my time to help out in completing it.
I appreciate that, and I will be asking Counsel to assist and work with Administration, certainly on our communications team, and working with that nomination from that perspective. Any other comments? I want to publicly say thank you to the Administration. This gives me a great deal of pride to have the opportunity to nominate, if Counsel approves this today, as Counsel member, because I think we, for those that have sat here now going on five years, the change and the direction that comes from Administration, the work that goes in, I see each and every day, and I'm very fortunate to be here each and every day to see that. But the commitment from our Administration, they're in early, they're here late, they answer the call each and every time that Counsel brings something forward, public concerns are raised, and it comes from good leadership, and I appreciate that very much from the City Manager through the executive team, to talking to the employees in the field. And, you know, our staff enjoy working at the city, and that's, there's other ways of measuring that, and hopefully that'll show up in reports and surveys going forward. But the executive leadership team very much appreciate the commitment you've made to our city, and they'd like the opportunity to acknowledge it publicly and put that nomination forward. So thank you for your efforts. And with that, I'll look for direction from Counsel on 11.1, the Dedicated Senior Team Award nomination. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you, team. I move that Counsel nominate the City of Lloydminster Executive Leadership Team, ELT, for the Society of Local Government Managers Dedicated Senior Team Award.
Thank you. Seconder, Counsel Dajak, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. With that, I'll look for...
Your Worship, just sorry to interrupt. Thank you for that recognition, and whether we win or not, it's, certainly our entire team appreciates that, and not just our ELT, but our entire staff deserve a lot of credit for the, for the work we've done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate it. I'll look to the inquiry room for the media Eric. Thank you very much. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Counsel Dajak. There'd be no, no.